Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the work session for October, October 25th, 2024. And I would like to ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. And we'll just get right into it if we can have our Fall Eye Ready results and impact of summer programs presented by Mr. Lowndes, Chief of Teaching and Learning, Mr. Roberts, Director of Accountability, and Ms. Bonner, Director of Title I Programs. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairperson Kramer and Chairperson Morley on the big screen. Thank you very much for inviting us to talk a little bit today about the Eye Ready scores. And I just want to remind folks that I need my clicker, actually. That this is the Fall Eye Ready. And so this is to give us a good indication of where our students are starting the year. And so I'll begin the presentation by talking about the Eye Ready score, talk a little bit about some of the data that we took from this summer with our summer programs, our actions taken that we do about the data. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, though, because when we gave the MCAP data, we talked about how we're trying to improve the reading and the math. What I'm going to focus more on today is how are some of our other departments are supporting this effort with the losing of some of the funding. You know, we've lost ESAR, we've lost the lead funding, and we're losing some of the Title I. It's decreasing over time. I want to talk a little bit about how like Title I is really helping us bundle the programs that we're doing, and it is much more targeted in supporting and helping us keep some of the tutoring and other initiatives that have been put into place the last couple of years to catch our students up. So that's where we're going to focus the majority of today's presentation is really on how Title I and some of the other programs, we're bundling the funding to keep our programs together to let the community know that we're doing everything we can to make sure that we continue to help and support our students along the way. I'm going to start off talking about the math. And unfortunately, this year, you're not going to see a lot of growth compared from year to year. So we're looking at last year's fall to this year's fall. And I want to talk a little bit about the data. So the data is, when you see it's in the dark green, that means students have met or exceeded the grade level standards that they're currently in. So when you're in first grade, if you're a dark green already, you've already met the first grade standards, or you've exceeded those standards. If you're in the light green, you've partially met those first grade standards. And if you're yellow, you're approaching those standards. And so you're going to see the majority of our students are in the light green and in the yellow. And that's because we're starting the school year off, and they haven't met their grade level standard yet. Unfortunately, the red is two grade levels below the pink, and then the dark red is more than three grade levels below. And so this overall is how the system did from year to year. And like you'll see, we're pretty stagnant from last year. When you look at the colors and where we started out, where we're starting out within the green, the yellow, the pink, and the dark red. You'll see by grade as well. The one of the things that I want to talk a little bit about by grade is, and we had a chief academic officer meeting last week, and at the state is very similar to this, and all of the LEAs is very similar to this, is that you'll see over time, the percentage in the dark red and the pink actually increases over time. And what the data is showing, especially with our students, looking at the students that are in COVID, is that if you don't continue giving the interventions to support and the extended learning opportunities from grade to grade, then actually, students end up slipping and falling farther and farther behind. And I think you'll see that with us, and nationally, you'll see the same data, and statewide, you see the same data as well. And this is our fall data. Once again, this is by grade level, grades one through five, and then our middle school. Once you'll see, we're very similar to last year. One thing that I also want to point out is that if you look at our data and compare our data to the national data to date and Maryland data to date, you'll see that we're very comparable to where they are as well. And if you look at our reading data, our reading data is better than our math data. Our students are catching up faster. And one of the things that we noticed, actually, when we compared our data to the national and to the Maryland, we are either right there even with them, or in some places, we've exceeded them. And so we are, you know, catching up. And once again, it's a little easier, I think, to catch up with reading than it is in math, where math is much more linear, and it builds on each other. And here's, you know, as a system overall, for Charles County Public Schools, the last three years, including this past fall, where we just finished our data, 24, 25. Here's by grade level. And once again, if you look at the comparison, national year-to-date, Maryland, you'll see that we're doing very well when we compare ourselves to them, better than the math as far as.
Do you want to say, I don't think we're doing very well. I think we are progressing.
Not very well. I mean, compared to the math and how well we're doing compared to the math.
I just want to be very clear on that. I think we are, yes, we have less gaps to overcome for literacy, and we are very, very aligned to what national data tells us and what state-level data tells us for reading.
We're not where we want to be, no, in any way, shape, or form. And so when you look at the Eye Ready, we did have, once again, our Eye Ready Parent Night. We had it virtually. And this year, we're very happy with the number of attendees. This year, we had many more than last year. We had 490 attended that night live, and then we've had over 2,621 that have looked at it on our website. And so I do think we are, not I don't think, I know that we are getting much more involvement from our parents, and I'm going to share that with the summer impact data, because what you're going to end up seeing with our summer impact data is the summer gain and loss. And when we look at that, what you'll see is, is that even our students that are not emboozed, compared nationally, have not slipped as far. And I do believe that's because of all the resources that we're offering our parents over the summer, where they can use the clever and get into our summer programs on the web, that they're taking advantage of that. And you'll notice that actually, with the ELA, with our second grade, those students actually outperformed or didn't have the slide at all. They had a .5 compared to even our boost students. I do want to remind folks that our boost students are students that are in the yellow and in the red, and that our no-boost students includes our green and our dark-green students. So you're not really comparing apples to apples. But when you look at the national slide, that does compare everybody nationally overall. And you can look at the slide. So our summer programs continue to do well. We focus in on reading and math at the elementary level with our summer boost programs, and we focus in on continuing the interventions that our students are using throughout the school year. With our summer school, so the summer school, once again, is to help students get caught up, or to help students take courses for the first time, original credit courses. One of the things that we're very happy with this year is when you look at the red circle up there, you'll notice that our students, the number of students that took original credit courses this year more than doubled than the previous year. And that allows our students actually to have more opportunities within their schedule to take some of the courses that they want to take as they're moving forward. When we look at our supports, and we talked about earlier when we brought up the elementary team, that, you know, we look at it in three different ways. We look at it from a tier one, which is how do we improve the original instruction, and we look at the curriculum, and we look at the materials we're using, we look at the schedule and how we're using the schedule. And then we also look at improving our teaching and learning from the professional learning that we're providing our teachers around the curriculum and around the interventions. And so you'll see that it's looking at tier one. It's also looking at the interventions. So what other extra help, extra supports do we need to offer our students to help get them caught up? And then when you look at providing extra help and extra supports, you also look at extending the time that students are working on, either interventions or the curriculum. So we're looking at the extended learning opportunities that happen either before school or after school. And so we talked about that with the elementary, and it's very similar, sorry, to the middle school, and we approach it in the same way. We look at tier one, we look at the interventions, and we look at the supports we're offering, and how do we extend the learning both before school and after school and during the summer? And as I said, it's very expensive to offer these additional opportunities for our students. And we've been very fortunate over the last couple of years to get the ESAR funding, to get the LEEDs funding, and to get our title fundings over the last couple of years. Actually, we're higher than they currently are moving forward. And so I want to have Erin Bonner talk a little bit today about how she is really using the Title I to help enforce the programs and the supports that we're using within our schools.
Thank you.
Yep.
Go back one more slide.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just to give some background information before I jump into my first slide. So as we started, we stepped into school year '24, '25, we also stepped over that funding cliff. We lost, like Mr. Lowndes said, our ESAR funding and a lot of our LEEDs funding and those federal funds that we were utilizing over the past few years to help us support our students, especially when we're looking at our interventions that were taking place throughout the school day and after-school hours. So with that, when you know when funding gets tight, you are definitely, you're digging down, you're looking, you're prioritizing your spending, and we're also looking for opportunities to braid funds whenever we can with any of our federal programs, state and local programs as well. So when we're thinking about that, we're also thinking about our consolidated application. This is the second year of the consolidated application, formerly known as the Bridge to Excellence. So in that application, we do, as a district, have the opportunity to look across our federal programs and ensure that we're collaborating with our funding and making sure, okay, if this is going to be in Title II funding, then maybe it doesn't need to be in Title I anymore, and looking at those opportunities so that we can have some flow.
I want to talk a little bit with the titles are focused.
Okay. So Title I, of course, is our Title I programs, our federally funded programs, and then it's also school improvement funds. So any of our high-poverty schools benefit from those programs, and then also any schools identified by the state, so our CSI and ATSI schools. This is the first year that we have non-Title I schools receiving Title I funding to support their students. So this is the first time I've been in Title I for 11 years, and this is the first time we've been able to do that. So we are excited about that opportunity with those funds to support student groups across our district. Title II is our professional development and teacher induction program, falls under Title II. Title III would be our ELD program for ML students. And then Title IV would be any of those well-rounded programs that are supporting the fine arts or any of our STEM or STEAM programs.
ML stands for multilingual.
Yes. Yes, our acronyms, they continue. Yes. If you hear me say ESAR, I apologize as I try to get my brain to now say ELD instead of ESAR. Yes. So we are working on those. I love our acronyms. So those are our four title programs that are a part of the consolidated application. They all consist of federal funds. So, and there are opportunity to braid with state and local funds within those programs. So then moving into our funding sources that we're looking at. And I oversee the consolidated application. So it's been a great effort to really work with our different offices to ensure that we're collaborating and supporting all of our students with these funds. So when we're also thinking about our funding sources that we can braid funds with, besides our title funds, we also have McKinney-Vento funds that we can braid with and also support our students. We have our extended learning opportunities that are happening out of our general funds. It's a small pot of funding this year, but we're really talking to schools to make sure that that small pot still has a mighty push towards supporting student achievement in those small group interventions that are taking place. And then our biggest pot that seems to be growing is our community school funds. Now, those are state funds, but we are able to braid with those funds across our title programs as well. And really, from the state level, MSD is really pushing that we're looking at our schools that are also community schools and how we can braid to support any of their low-achieving student groups, also with those community school funds. A great example is the work over at, let me see, Thomas Stone. Thomas Stone is not a Title I school, but they are an ATSI school identified for their ML population. And so Ms. Pearl is using her school improvement funds, her CSI/ATSI funds, to provide tutors to push in and support her ML students during the school day. And then she's also looking at her community school funds to ensure that they were also looking at that student group when they're developing their after-school programming. So really, looking across your different pots and looking how you can combine those to support a focused effort is what we're seeing with any of our pots of funding that we're looking at, and making sure that doesn't happen without cross-collaboration. If we're not able to talk across office and really identify, oh, wow, this school's identified for their ML population, how can I also ensure that our community school funds are supporting those students and also supporting their families? So going from there, it's really a two-pronged approach that we're looking at. And the first approach is really looking at our school's data analysis. So looking at our school's school improvement plan, having those data utilization meetings with our schools to really drill down to what the need is in our schools, and how, and the pots of funding that they have available to them, and how we can strategically utilize those pots. And then also ensuring that we're not overtaxing our teachers. We found, too, in times, if they're working hard during the school day and then staying late for an after-school program, at times, we may have some teacher burnout, plus the events and all of those things that take place. So really thinking about our workforce, and we're also supporting them. That's why some schools have leaned more towards having ELO programs during the school day, where they're having the tutors push in and support. And so that leads to my example that's on the slide, is really when we're looking at our title schools, really across the board, all of them, we really talked about what is the need, how can we develop support for you? And it really was about human resources. So our schools really wanted to see, okay, how can I put my funds towards supporting our students during the school day in this sense, so that we are supporting those interventions? So across our title schools, we did, it was about $1.5 million that is allocated and is supporting hiring individuals to support students during the day. So that's interventions that they are supporting. And so for the first time this year, I've seen the most degreed tutors that we've been able to hire, and these aren't teachers. These are, they are just tutors that are supporting instruction or supporting interventions during the school day. So it is a lot of our retired teachers, God bless their souls, that are coming back and working in our Title I schools, or our degreed staff that are coming in and getting trained in an intervention, being trained in Wilsons or foundations, and then they're going in, and they have their small groups that they're working with during the day. So the other model that we're seeing with this group of tutors is a push-in model, very much mimicking kindergarten. So you have your classroom teacher, and then you have an IA that are supporting instruction. Here, we have maybe in first grade, I'm thinking about Barnhart Elementary, across their first grade classrooms, they have their teacher, and then they also have a Title I tutor that's pushing and supporting and really mimicking that support, so that we can make sure that the students are accessing the core curriculum during the school day and getting those extra set of hands that they might need. So as you can see, we have 82 small groups for reading interventions, and this is just with our Title I hired tutors. This is not the math interventionists, the reading interventionists that are also in the school deploying those interventions. As you can see, they're focused on evidence-based interventions. They are collecting data and making data-driven decisions on who is in those groups and who moves out of those groups for more support, or they're able to move into more of a push-in with class support from their teacher. Chapter I is our district-wide initiative to support literacy across all of our first-grade classrooms. I'll talk more about that on our next slide. But then also math, we've got to give our math some love, and we have 62 small group interventions happening across our title schools. And again, looking at those evidence-based interventions, where we can collect data, see student growth, and have conversations on where our students are moving to make sure, first, they're in the correct intervention, and that our progress monitoring data is helping them to move through that program. We also have behavior interventionists that we've hired at Eva Turner that's working to support some behaviors that are happening in the building. And then also, we have tutors that we hire that work specifically with our McKinney-Vento students, our homeless students, and then also our students that are in shelters. We have tutors that go out to the shelters and support our students. So they're getting that homework help and any other additional support that they need, so that they are able also to access the curriculum. And then moving into our next slide. So the second-pronged approach, the same way we are really looking at schools and having them do that data analysis of where they are and assessing their needs, we do that here also at the central office. So looking at our schools across the board. So this is the example of our Title I district-wide initiatives. So this is how we're using our Title I Part A funds to really look at supporting our schools and aligning our work to what we're doing when it comes to the strategic plan of our school system, when we're looking at Blueprint, when we're looking at the consolidated application, really making sure that we're pulling in all of those pieces and making data-driven decisions, attaching funding to it. So as I said earlier, Chapter I tutoring is focused on our first-grade students in all of our Title I schools. It really is focused around literacy and getting our students strong in those foundational literacy skills, so that we have strong readers coming out of third grade. We also, what that looks like at the middle school level is tutors going in to support our Lit Labs. So having that second, again, another pair of hands in there to support our most critically needy students that are in our Lit Labs in our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade classrooms at General Smallwood. We also have, just to highlight a few more, Brain Pop, it's not the same old Brain Pop that it used to be when I was in the classroom. Now, Brain Pop has lots of really great videos and has different activities to really pull students in and get them excited about what they're getting ready to learn. We're utilizing Brain Pop a lot with our science and our science classrooms across kindergarten all the way through middle school. It definitely has been a strong component and resource to add into those science classrooms for that prior knowledge in our schools when we're working with our students, starting a new lesson. Flashlights 360, this is a great example of how this came about last year, working with Title III, having conversations about our ML students and their growth, and how we can support and what type of programming, a resource that we can get in to support our students, our ML students, as they enter school. So this was brought about by Autumn Hoffman in her office. So really, this is a web-based program where we're looking at our ML students, and really, it's a formative assessment tool. It is really, it mimics WIDA. So it's looking at pictures and Word and Access for our ML students. So we are really excited about that and the data that comes out of that program that we can use with our students and with their teachers. We're also very excited about our nine apprentices that we have across our Title I schools. So this supports Blueprint. So here, we are using Title I funds to hire apprentices in our Title I schools. They are paired with a seasoned teacher, and they are, it's up to, it's a minimum of 400 hours that the apprentice is working with their teacher and working with students. They set a goal. At Barnhart, I know that the apprentice is gone to a training over the summer, so that she's doing Wilsons within a small group at her school. So it's really exciting to have our students in high school, looking at the career ladder, and having them in our Title I schools. They are part of the school staff. They go to staff meetings. So that's exciting work that we're doing there. And then also, as we are ensuring that our students are accessing the curriculum, we also want to make sure that our teachers have the knowledge base and tools that they need as they are teaching and implementing our core curriculum. So providing data dives at our schools has really been great, where we have a consultant from Eye Ready come out and sit with each grade-level team, so they can look at grade-level data and make just decisions right there on the spot about the students, who's in which groups, how they might need to change their groups based on the data. So that really is mimicking those data-driven decisions we want to see happen every day in our schools. I would say the next big one is our coaching that's happening across our school system, whether you're in your PLCs, receiving coaching. We have a lot of consultants that are coming out and supporting our schools. Over at Davis, I know that the principal is really focusing on that coaching happening with his special ed staff and how they're supporting them. So these are just some ways that we're utilizing our federal funds to support our students and our teachers as we support student achievement.
I just want to say that, you know, the federal funds and Title I, it's in addition to. So everyone gets a baseline, and many of our, all the schools are getting some part of these interventions and supports and coaching opportunities. But Title I will enhance it or be able to give more money, so that that school can have more. An example of that is that, so Summer Boost for All Students went three weeks for our elementary students, and then Title I gave money to their Title I schools, so those Title I students went four weeks. So it's in addition to, it cannot replace.
Nice.
Are there any questions at this time about the data or about the funding or?
Smith?
Thank you. Acting, Madam Chair? I don't know. So one, appreciate the presentation. I have been unable to see Title I at this level for a while, so I was just giddy with, oh, this is so interesting. So really appreciate it. I think it's also very helpful for the public, when we talk about where our student Eye Ready scores are, to understand all of the supports that the school system provides, especially with the level of detail in terms of like, what exactly does it look like in terms of push-in supports, where we're thinking strategically about human capital, but also student needs, but also, you know, the equity of it. Like sometimes, parents, the kids can't make before and after-school activities, so you need to be able to do things in the midst of the day in order to catch those kids who need it. But also thinking, being thoughtful about the, I guess you would call them, push-out supports for our students, as you mentioned, who may be furthest from opportunities. So those who are in shelters, those who are living in the hotels and motels of the county, but still going to school.
It's hard to hear.
It's hard to hear me?
On the...
I felt like I was yelling. Okay, I'll speak louder. So definitely appreciate the presentation. A few things I wanted to inquire about. You mentioned the, I wanted to know more about the pockets of growth. I'm able to see kind of incremental gains, you know, between the various levels, like students who are going from like the deepest red, kind of making their way up to the green. I'm curious, what are the opportunities where we're seeing like targeted growth, and we're able to provide those as like bright spots, so that other educators can see kind of what's the secret sauce happening here in this classroom that perhaps needs to be replicated elsewhere across the system?
So that's one thing that we do do, is we're looking very deep into like, who's the teacher that is getting the most growth? And I know that, you know, Dr. Navarro, for example, last year, highlighted one of those teachers at her State of the Schools address. So we do look at who the teachers are with the most growth and highlight them, and then highlight the supports and what they're doing. I will say, we did look at, you know, our teachers overall this school year, because we wanted to know how our international teachers were doing. And what we saw was, you know, our teachers that have been with us for a while, that are certified teachers, are getting the growth. And what we saw is that our provisionally certified teachers that have been with us for more than a year or two, that have taken advantage of some of the professional learning, there's some growth. There's not nearly as much as if they were, been here for a while and they were certified. But we do see that, you know, the professional learning is what's needed for our new teachers, and we have to continue to provide that, because that's where we're seeing the least amount of growth for our students, based on the teachers. And this is, of course, generalities. There are teachers that are first-year teachers that are knocking it out of park, that have growth that is phenomenal. So we do look at the individuals, but we also look at trends to understand, like from a system, where do we need to put more money, and where do we need to put our focus?
And just quickly, you referenced about money. I think one of the important things, whenever we talk about budget, is to be able to get to this level of detail that we say, education in our system costs X amount of dollars because we're investing in this way. So when we talk about incremental growth, unfortunately, there is no magic bullet that's going to take a student who is three grade levels below, reading, and then in a year, have them be above grade level. them be above grade level. Yes, there are pockets of innovation that can do that, but in terms of looking at the whole, it's not likely to be able to help a student grow that quickly. So, but when it comes to the budget, being clear with, you know, those who hold the purse strings, that we're investing in education, like we require the money that we require for summer boost, you know, for the summer school that you referenced, for those extended before and after-care programs that are helping us realize the 2% growth here, the 3% growth there, the 5% growth there. And without that type of intervention or those supports, we may not be able to sustain or even increase that level of growth. So appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
And that's really why I wanted to highlight even over time, what they're really noticing, you know, with all this study that's going on with the COVID gaps is that the schools, if you do not maintain interventions and supports throughout their school years, then they fall farther and farther behind. They might get caught up that first-grade year, but then they fall back behind.
Any continuity?
Yeah.
Ms. Bala Washington?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to ask this question because I just asked it when I was growing up. I definitely understand Title I school. I came from Georgia, so definitely understand what it is. But I also understand certain programs that are used outside of the school works very well for our students. I'm going to tell you, Abeka. I know you can't use Abeka because it's Christian. Hooked on Funny, that is another phenomenal one that the programs are great in. Can we find something similar to those programs? Because those kids get those programs and they are able to bring it to life and to learn in the foundation. So when those kids get those, when we at home and we provide these programs for our students, when they come to school, they're ready. But then somehow, something happened and it's not something that they can actually grab to. So I'm looking for a program that we can really look into to find similar to those programs because we know that the kids get those two programs. So we should look outside, think outside the box and think that find something that's similar like that because if we don't get a handle on closing this gap, I'm just afraid that it's going to grow, 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 and it's going to go out of whack right now. Because those programs have been proven to work. I use them on my own student, my own kids, and they work. And if we, if we can look into programs or talk to, you know, people that make programs that the school accept and see if they could say, what is a, what kind of program that has that capability? That bring kids in, they grab kids in and they hook them and they, and they're there. And then they move and they progress and then when they get to school, the program says not like that, so they not interested or they find it difficult or they don't, you know, they can't find that groove when they, we gave them to you all and they had the groove. So it's something that we got to find a program out there that works. And that's why, you know, when you're in private school, they can use those schools, that's why they advance because they know that those programs work and they grab to them. And again, I understand that the public schools cannot use Christian-based programs like this, but I'm pretty sure that someone out there do have a program similar to that without the Christian base. Because if we don't capture them from kindergarten to third grade, if they cannot connect the dots then and they keep, they go further, they're not going to connect the dots at all. They can't because they don't have the foundation. Because without that foundation, they can't move into, to the next level, to the next level. And then they feel like, I can't, you know, I can't succeed, I can't learn, I'm not going to do it. And we shouldn't want our kids to find like that. So I just want us to look into finding something like that for all of our kids. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Thomas?
Thanks for the presentation. I think the numbers are a good, a good start to transparency for parents, but also good information. Because I think there are lots of parents who just don't know. I mean, if you think about in our society, you got your work computer and parents working, they got stuff to do at work, and then they have all this technology they have to embrace for their children and then help their children support. So I do think helping see the numbers helps parents and then listing out the various types of instruction, supports that are available that parents can have some autonomy to do on their own with their students is excellent. I know Ms. Thompson did a program for AI and she's done some other ones to just talk about the availability of things in the school for parents. But one of my questions is, can we provide some kind of assessment trajectory for parents? Like if I have a kindergartner and I want to help them prepare along the way and I want to be proactive or I perhaps want to, you know, see what's on the roadmap or the pathway for my student so I can start to infuse things in our everyday life, you know, like I'm going to have you in the kitchen counting something because I know maybe we do skip counting at home because that's going to help you when you're six, but when you get to eight, you're going to have to do skip counting. Is there something we have already available or something we could do to help the parents? Because if we go back and look at the data, we see particular places where the scores drop, right? And that's when we know instruction is getting a little more difficult, right? So we see, we'll do some work in kindergarten, first grade, we'll study second grade, third grade drop. We know why it drops in third grade. It's becoming a little more complex, it's a little more difficult, they're synthesizing words and reading and doing more comprehension. Same with math, you're adding more skills. So I was just wondering, you know, for parents out there that are listening, for parents that really want to try to be proactive with their students, if I know, if I'm not doing it on a year-to-year basis, but I kind of have a little bit more of a roadmap, like a two-year basis where I can just look and see, that may help our parents. So I was just wondering, is there something we can do or something we can point them to to kind of help them with that? Or maybe it's something already available. I know in iReady, there are some things already out there that you could just look a couple grades ahead.
So that's one of the things I think Dr. Navarro, State of the Union, I mean, schools kind of highlighted was, you know, where are some of the resources that our parents can go to? But, you know, Dr. Navarro keeps pushing us to make it simpler for our parents. And we understand that some of the things aren't as simple as they could possibly be. And so that's one of the areas that we are working on. How do we make it so a parent of a first grader can go in and understand in their reading what they're going to focus on for the year? What are the resources for reading that they have available to them for math as well? What is it that they're going to focus in? What are the standards? What are they going to learn? What's the progression? And then what are the supports that can help them if they're struggling? And so we are working on that to make it much better for our parents to have easier access to that type of support.
Okay, thank you. And that was really for the sake of the public, but also just because we know the scores are not the single determinant of the school system's success or a student's success. But it is a measure, and if we can continue to have the measures progressively get better, then that's great for the students. We also know that there may be some changes coming to what the assessments look like. And so I would like to continue to have transparency with looking at the assessments, but I just don't want parents to get wrapped around the axle like my child's score is not whatever it should be. Or even just our school system, the scores are whatever they should be, but also focus on the individual things that you can do as a parent for your child in order to make sure that they're continuing to progress. Because it's lots of things that are not just in the classroom, right? It's lots of, you know, counting at home or colors or, you know, reading a book and then having a conversation about it to ensure comprehension. So I just want parents to know, like, you can take that in your own hands and do some work too.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Mr. Hancock?
Thank you. And I'll try to be brief. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. It's good to see and it's, the iReady, iReady data, it's always, you know, the growth is always very minimal, but we're always seeing growth in the right direction. And that's, that's a good thing. I have a question. And I think, Mr. Lowndes, you touched on the, finding the teachers that are really excelling and really performing in their individual classes and growing that leaps, overcoming those gaps, bringing their students up from, from the red to the dark green. So the question I have is, as, as the Blueprint moves forward and requires more teachers to spend, teachers spend a certain amount of time not only teaching but working with other teachers and, and being mentors to other teachers. What would that look like in our classroom as far as using those veteran teachers that are performing maybe to a higher standard than, than some and using them as a mentor for teachers that are perhaps not as seasoned and could use that mentorship? What would that look like?
That's a great question. So we just had this conversation with the union because that's one of the things that we have to determine with the union in negotiations with them and as partners with them and collaborating with them. So I will be leading a workforce to identify this year, what does the lead teacher look like in our district? And also, what are the other opportunities for our teachers within the career ladder? Because those are the exact questions that we have to answer moving forward. So, you know, what is that, like you're saying, that 40% of the time that they can be used to either tutor students or to work with other teachers? And what would that look like? And then how would we determine whether, you know, they're a Level 1 teacher or whether they're moving up the ladder to a Level 2 or Level 3 or? And so we have to make those, some of those decisions.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And I appreciate that.
Hope to be coming back to you by the end of this year, beginning of next year with your answer complete.
Yeah, yeah, and I know, and I know that Dr. Jones and Ms. Majors work with the contract stuff on that as well. And, you know, I just think personally, you know, all for, because if you're going to ask more from a teacher, there needs to be more incentive, incentives for that. And I know that's where the conversations with the union will have to take place. But I really think that's how we all move forward as a system is we have some teachers that have been around a long time and have a wealth of knowledge. And if we can just find the perfect world to, to capture all of that and share that, I think you'll really see numbers grow even more than what they are, so.
Steve, I don't know if you want to talk about how you make, what you, kind of data you share with the school principals as far as the iReady scores by individual teachers?
Yeah, we map it to their actual, each student in the class, the teacher, the principal can see each teacher and then where those students perform on iReady, excuse me, iReady and how that compares to their MCAP performance as well. So as we always talk about that typical growth and that stretch growth and then looking at those students that were one grade level below and made that stretch growth and then comparing that to, how did they perform? And we did see that matching, that students that were one grade level below and then did, did get that stretch growth, did perform at that proficiency level in the MCAP assessment. So we could see that what's happening is working in one place and it's actually given us good predictors where we're going to be later. So if we can get that, so the principals are really aware of what teachers are doing what and what they're doing with their students and what kind of predictors they can do and then working together to collaborate to figure out where they can get more, more students doing that. It's big.
That's pretty cool.
But to answer with the veteran teachers right now, I think you heard, you know, Velvet talk about with her team, how we, we've used that grow-your-own pot of money within Leeds to incentivize some of those teachers to become mentors to our, to our new teachers.
Thank you. Ms. Morley, I believe you had some questions?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. Appreciate it. Thank you all so much for this presentation. It's always informative. I agree with Dr. Navarro. The iReady scores are, I mean, it is what it is. They're, they're not exciting. I agree with Mr. Hancock. I appreciate any growth and I know that there's a lot that goes into preparing the students and candidly trying our best to ensure that we're always moving forward. So I fully appreciate the task at hand and that it's not easy to do. Mr. Lowndes, you referenced COVID. One of the questions I get asked a lot, and these are all for the benefit of the public, we discuss these in some form, but I think that they bear repeating. To the best of your ability or guess or, you know, informed hypothesis, whatever you want to call it, how long are we going to be feeling the effects of COVID? Because I know that we were essentially virtual for give or take two years and that put students who are already behind even further behind. Never mind the students that don't learn well behind a computer and the students who, you know, don't learn well at home, et cetera, et cetera. So I know that every time we reference these, these scores, we talk about the COVID effect. Do we have any idea of when we may be out of, excuse me, out of that space? Or is this something that for the foreseeable future, we're always going to have to have the, the COVID effect, so to speak? Because I ask because at one point years ago, one of my boys' teachers had said that she felt unfortunate that these students that were impacted by COVID would always be behind. And I truly don't want to accept or receive that.
So, and I didn't mean to use COVID as an excuse or what I, what I meant to use COVID for was the, the studies that came out of COVID. So in looking at the studies, what they saw was, and I think this is the case no matter what, I think they're learning from, is that anytime you have students that need help and support to get caught up, if you don't continue with that help and support, then they fall back behind. And I think if they did studies prior to COVID, they would have found the same information. I don't know, I haven't looked at those studies. I've just looked at since then. But the, I'm just saying, that's, the studies that they're showing is that students continuously need help and support to stay on grade level in those opportunities. The answer to your question, I, I personally don't know when they'll, because there's so many factors as to why students are behind and individual students are behind. And some of them are the social-emotional piece that we saw came out of COVID. And that we were providing many more mental health resources now than we ever provided and our students needed it. And so, you know, that compounded on top of the learning loss makes it sometimes more difficult to get students caught up because you have to really work on the social-emotional as much as you have to work on the academic side of it.
Yeah, and you touched on exactly what, the point that I was trying to make. It's not at all to be an excuse. It's just the reality for people to consider all the different factors that go into, you know, the, the supports that we're trying to offer. And you hit the nail on the head that a lot of it is social-emotional, so it's not just academic. The academic in of itself may not be enough for some students. And to that point, I know unfortunately, we've talked a lot about this dreaded cliff and here we are. We've touched on this before, but if you wouldn't mind, to the best of your knowledge, sharing, what do we think summer's going to look like? We understand the benefit of summer. We understand that it helps considerably with some of the learning loss. Do we have an idea of what that might be looking like going forward? Because we've, you know, we've talked a lot about all the things that we rolled out, that we offered, that we haven't been able to offer before. And now we're simultaneously dealing with a significant loss of funding. So do we know yet what that might, you know, what the end result might look like for summer? Because of course, that's going to further impact any learning loss.
So we'll definitely have a summer program and it will still be a robust summer program. So thank you for the board. I mean, two years ago, the board put money into the base funding to make sure that we are able to continue with a robust summer program even after the ESAR money went away. So we will have that money. What we are, have to determine is some of the other things that went along with the summer program such as transportation, because that was a huge cost. And so how much, will we be able to continue any transportation? We will have to provide or will provide transportation for students that receive special education services. But on top of that, how much transportation would we be able to provide and support? And so we actually, you know, during, right around now, we start talking about summer programs, to tell you the truth. We start having meetings, we start bringing in all the offices, food services, transportation, and we start kind of figuring out what it is and what we can provide and support. And we'll bring in Title I once again and all the other money sources to try to determine how can we help and support our students continue getting the learning that they need over the summer. So I'll have a better answer later, once we're able to really look, sit down and talk to the budget folks and Mike and everybody else.
Okay, I appreciate that because I know that's always looming and it's an essential support that we provide for students to cover a lot of that, that time that they're out. And the last question is, and Ms. Samisha Thomas touched on this, we do have candidly sometimes mixed messages because as we've talked many times, students can be doing well on their report card, but not necessarily doing well for a variety of reasons on some of these standardized tests. And so for parents that might be really trying to get a true understanding of how is my student doing? What would you advise? What would be the primary thing that you think that, that they should give the most weight to? Is it the report card because that comes directly from, you know, the teachers and, you know, assessments and day-to-day? And not to say that the, the iReady, et cetera, is not important, but perhaps it doesn't carry as much weight? Could you maybe explain that a little bit? Because I've gotten that question a couple of times.
First of all, I would say talk to the teacher first because they know the student and it is multiple measures that we look at for all students. And it, and it won't be the same. But I would, so the, the iReady gives you a good indication of where your child is with reading and with math, especially at the early ages with the foundational skills. And so I would definitely take a look at that and look as to where they need the extra help and the extra support. We are offering the My Path to parents to use at home and we're offering other supports and materials that parents could use at home as well to, with their children to build up some of those areas and their gaps. And that's one of the things that we discussed in that iReady meeting is, you know, how to read the report, look at where their gaps are within their reading, and then what are some of the interventions that they can use at home to help build up? that they can use at home to help build up that gaps that they're missing within their their reading and talk to their teachers to find out what it is that they can do to support what's going on in the classroom as well. But I would talk to, once again, the iReady is a it's a point in time to show how well a student's doing that day on their reading and on their math. But it should then be correlated with how well they're doing in school and talk to the teacher and look at the grades and look at the assessments and look at what's going on with the curriculum. Because the curriculum should also tell you with the assessments that are taking place, how they're doing on a day to day basis. Once again, the iReady score today, I want to, you know, is is talking about for a student that just started the school year, if they're in the dark green, they've already met that grade level that they're currently in. And then the question really then is for the school is, so what are you doing to help enforce my student, you know, to improve and move beyond now that they're reading at such a high level? So it's used for both to find the students that are really struggling, but also for the students that are doing well and what we're doing to help them grow too.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all so much. Most of the questions that I was going to ask have been asked. So that's the benefit of going last, I guess. I just want to say that I appreciate all the detail that went into this. I really think it's helpful as a parent, as a board member, of course. But as a parent, it's really helpful, too, to kind of see data trends across the state and nationally to know that while we know that the numbers aren't great, we know that it's not just us, right? So it's kind of a little comforting to hear that and to hear all the things that we're doing, you know, to kind of move the needle, you know, move things forward. And so I just appreciate that. And it sounds like continuity is like the key word here, right? Continuity. So for everyone listening, you know, for parents, you know, making sure that to Ms. Thomas's point, you know, we're we're doing things at home that are available, like the MyPath and and other resources. And if you need resources, it sounds like the best advice is to talk to your child's teacher to find out things that you can sort of help support and supplement at home. And then, you know, for our commissioner friends and our our state friends, you know, we need funding to be able to offer that continuity. So just wanted to plug that.
You can also go to our website. Our website has the resources and supports for them to
Right. Thank you for that. Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you all again. Oh, Ms. Thomas?
Just a small question. You talked about the different reading interventions that are available, like I know Wilson and some other ones. If parents want to know which which interventions or which curriculums are being used, they can go to the website because you just mentioned that. Is that on the website as well?
So there is a website that shows what interventions are used for what where what like if it's fluency, what do we use and offer for fluency? And if it's phonics, what do we use and offer for phonics?
Right. Because I just wanted to, Ms. Butler Washington raised the point about the curriculums that we use. And I think it may also help parents, again, just more information for them to know which curriculums we're using. Because we do have a variety of reading curriculums that we utilize. And then we specifically use them for particular kids if they need a a more supportive intervention. So just for the public, parents, if you want to know what curriculum is being used, but there are some innovative curriculums that are out there that we are using currently today.
And Dr. Navarro had.
So I just want to add, the Maryland State Department of Education recently published their sort of ratings, recommendations on curriculum for both literacy and math. The core curriculums of both in that Charles County Public School is using for both literacy and math are top rated by the state. And the interventions that are on the last two slide or the slide before the last slide that says before questions, they are all evidence-based programs. So if you recall, we are only using evidence-based programs that follow the science of reading in our approach to phonics development, phonemic awareness, and all of the strands of literacy development that we had. And I would say there isn't a bigger person that checks in and approves or doesn't approve things for coming into the school system than Erin Bonner because Title I is very, 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 has very high expectations of what gets approved. And she will stop partnerships and she will stop contracts if they do not meet those requirements. And I am very appreciative of her and her office because they do do excellent due diligence of what's coming in programmatically here. And they do it not just for curriculum, they do it for partnerships. And sometimes people don't like that because they're used to just having things happen. And, you know, I used to have my neighbor that came into the schools and is doing this work, or, you know, anybody can coach. And her office just doesn't play that. So I appreciate the level of of support that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Dr. Navarro. Really appreciate it. Thank you all again so much for being here. Appreciate you. Next up, revisions to 5,000 and 6,000 policy series, Mr. Schwartz. While he's coming up, I just want to say thank you to all of my colleagues. I would know I was on committee with a few of you because I was on two committees. It was quite an undertaking. And just want to thank you all for your dedication and working together to get this accomplished. I think Mr. Schwartz said it's about 100 policies between the two series. So y'all, we did that.
He's going to read them all night, right?
I know. No, I do not.
That's a joke.
Information item, Mr. Hancock. Well, we will need breakfast, sir.
I was going to do it in Latin, but I can.
As as we noted, there were about 100 policies in the 5,000 to 6,000 series the board reviewed
this past summer in various committees. Those two policy series are two of the nine policy series we have in Charles County. And those two were the ones that were identified by the board to review in this process first because those were the ones last reviewed furthest back. The focus was to ensure that the policies we have align with practice and the interests of the board. The guiding principles we use for our policies, thanks to Ms. Samisha Thomas, who suggested this at one of our first meetings in her committee, and we spread this throughout the other committees, was to make sure that policies are executionable, which is a made up word, but I like it, written in plain language, legally defensible, logical, considers equity and inclusion, and lines with the superintendent's rules. But more accurately, the superintendent's rules will align with policies because the policies come first. Committee number one reviewed all these policies. I'm not going to review them all, but we split the 5,000 series into two chunks. And this these policies were reviewed by committee number one. This is on board docs for anyone who would like to review what policies were reviewed by committee number one. Committee number two looked at these particular policies. And then we took the 6,000 series and did the same. We divided it in two different chunks. 6,000 series committee number three looked at all these policies. And you see the numbers that are looked at. It was quite extensive amount of work. And finally, committee number four. And Ms. Kramer thanked the board members, but I also want to highlight that staff spent many hours as well with board members.
Yes, absolutely.
And and did a lot of the background work. And I appreciate some of the staff members who were in this room who helped out. So the next steps, this is a an information report today. You're you're getting this for the first time. All the policies with all the suggested changes and and track changes are on board docs in each of the four chunks in each of the four committees. At the next board meeting, we'll look at we'll look at the policies as a report item. Certainly have a lot of time for discussion and questions. I'm going to leave it up to the board, whether they want to review individual policy by policy by policy. That will take quite a bit of time. But the other way to do it is to review it in chunks, the 5,000, 6,000 series, relying on the board members who are on those committees who looked at those policies in great depth. After the policies are adopted, it's some final meeting, hopefully in November or December, staff is going to then look at all the superintendent's rules that we have and align those with the policies, adopt other rules that are not currently in existence to to ensure that the policies are flushed out on the ground in the classes and in the schools. That's a long process as well. The policies that are in the 5,000 to 6,000 series are all on board docs. But I'm going to mention three different policies, particularly because three policies were not reviewed in the final will not be reviewed by the board in this final process. We already reviewed 5132.2, the grading policy. We just did that a couple of months ago, or last month, possibly. Policy 5132.4, the graded weighting policy, also we just adopted. Those two policies are finalized. We don't have to review them again in our current review. And 6431 is the eligibility policy, which the committee, looking at that policy, didn't touch because we had just adopted that in June of this year. So other than those three policies, all the other policies are on board docs for the board to review. I'm available for questions now of any particular policies or process at this point. And we'll be coming back at the next meeting to go over the policies in much more detail.
And just real quick, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. So I'm going to get to you in one second, Ms. Butler Washington. I just wanted to say that we did talk about in one of my committees about standardizing the the policy, like formatting. And so I think there was a couple ways that we talked about being able to do that. And we talked about either adopting the policies as they are with the substantive changes first, and then going back and doing the format updates, which you had indicated the board would be solely responsible for because if we do anything like rationale or scope, those things would not be done by staff. So just wanted to make sure the full board is aware of that. And I believe the chairperson has some ideas about subcommittee work to complete that. But I'm going to turn it over to her so she can talk about that. And then I'll take questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Yes, I am in agreement with Mr. Schwartz's suggestion that we take these 5,000, part one, part two. They've already been grouped logically in a way that made sense that flowed. And we would approve them en masse, in in large groups. What we could do if board members have specific questions or concerns about an individual policy, we can pull some policies out. But it's not designed for us to go through every single policy line by line. This is the time now for board members to review that, similar to how we did the board handbook. We would pass it as a whole. And it's on the board members to review at and their leisure and express any concerns. Otherwise, we can pass them as a group. As Mr. Schwartz said, there's been candidly hundreds of hours cumulatively dedicated to going through these in great detail. Some of them were minor changes, just rewording them. Some were more substantive, but everything has been available for all board members to see. And in addition to the board members that have been working so diligently, we, of course, always had the staff, who are the experts on hand, to help us flesh out what this would actually look like on a day to day level. And of course, keeping in mind that they actually would have to eventually align with the superintendent's rules. And so I have no interest or desire in going through these one at a time. That would candidly take us months, and I don't think it's necessary. And as the the vice chair alluded to, I'd also like to establish subcommittees that will be standing subcommittees for the board. And one of those can be policy. So I have spoken with the Montgomery County Chief of Staff, and thank you, Dr. Navarro, for the introduction, and how they operate. I'm very much interested in doing something similar for us. They have subcommittees that explore topics in detail that then provide recommendations to the full board. And so one of the ones I definitely would like to establish is to have a standing policy committee. And that could be some of the work that the policy committee initially tackles. I am fine with passing them as a group and then circling back to ensuring that there's some proper rationale. But I don't think that we need to include a lot of heavy detail in any of the policies because that would make them candidly very long and very cumbersome. And we're responsible for the why. The how is the superintendent. So if the how has more detail on the superintendent rules, that's perfectly fine. I don't think that our policies need to go into great detail. If we can keep them to a page or less, we're practical, I think that would be better suited for us. But what we could do is have the policy subcommittees focus on including a one or two sentence rationale for each policy. But that, to me, can be passed and amended candidly after we pass. Because I know a lot of these things, in order to be actually implemented, we're going to have to give the superintendent and her staff time to draft or revise the rules. So I just wanted to kind of give the board a heads up as to the next steps. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Butler Washington, you had a question or comment?
I just a comment. I just wanted to say kudos to Mr. Schwartz, putting up with us, changing dates and stuff. And I just thank you. I think the whole staff did a great job. But I just wanted to give publicly and say thank you for helping us through this because without you, I don't think we could have got through it. But kudos to the whole board also for making sure. So thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Smith?
No. Briefly want to echo my colleagues and their kudos. I think while this is inherently what the board is required to do, we review policy, we establish policy for the school system. I think oftentimes, the the public, parents, the community, business leaders believe we only come together on camera, in person, but not realizing the hours that we spend offline, not only attending community events and kind of being in in and amongst the community, but also doing the work of the board. So absolutely, kudos and appreciation to my colleagues for the multiple hours that were spent across these four subcommittees. Dr. Navarro, you and your team, phenomenal job. Thank you so much. And we're really hoping that these will make a better impact on education for our kids. So, yeah, thank you.
Oh, Ms. Brenda Thomas?
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. Ms. Samisha Thomas, then.
Yeah. So I I also want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. But I did want to ask one question as we review these. Even though we're going to review these in chunks, I know, Mr. Schwartz, when we went through ours, some were substantive changes and a lot, and some were very minor changes. Is there a way that we could, you know, at least have pointed out what the ones that were substantive as we go through review? Because I intend to go through all of these and look at them. But it'd be a little more helpful if I just knew like what was substantive. Because I know we went through some, it's like, oh, these are easy. And we went through some, and it was like a complete overhaul. So it would be helpful if you if you had that like in the notes or something so that we could look at it. Because then I don't I won't have to have somebody help me along with my review. I can kind of do it on my own.
Sure. Just recognize staff is always a little reluctant to say that one change in a policy is more important than another. These are board policies. All the policies are there for the board to review in detail. It's a lot of work, I understand. Certainly, staff can try to point out some of the major changes. But I think if you look at the policies, the track changes, note where the major changes are. Some policies, as you know, were only a word or two, some weren't touched at all, meaning they were fine as is. Most policies had minor changes and a few went into some some depth. But some of the policies, even with what looks like massive rewrites, are really just almost wordsmithing.
Cleaning up the language.
We had to move some paragraphs around. And we so we had to cross down here and add up there. So it looks like it's a major change. But really, it was just a paragraph being moved. But that's something the board can certainly.
So I because I was only in my two groups, I'm just going to assume that everybody did the same in their track changes. So I will be able to use that as kind of my labyrinth as I go through.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, everyone did. And the policies and the presentation that Mr. Schwartz just went through, just for the benefit of the public and my colleagues, is available on board docs. I know the presentation at first wasn't there, and it is now. But yeah, there is track changes on everything. And then there were some policies, I do recall, from two the two committees I was on, that we deleted the whole policy because it was included somewhere else. Did we indicate that as well? We did, right? That the policy was deleted because it was.
There are a few that we did just that. We indicated that it was no longer needed because it was restating another policy.
Okay.
And that was the benefit. That's that's the benefit of doing the entire 5,000 and 6,000 as chunks, because it's then you can start to see what we just dealt with that policy elsewhere.
Right.
And that was helpful.
Okay. Anyone else? Madam Chair, did you have anything else?
Sorry, I couldn't get off mute. Just to echo the huge kudos to the staff and thank them so very much. This was an undertaking and well done to the board. As we we accomplished this candidly much quicker than I think we anticipated. So great job, everyone.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. And I, yeah, again, thank you so much for all the work. And as Madam Chair said, I encourage my colleagues to go back and review the changes with the policies that you were not that on the committees that the committees did that rather you were not on, so that you'd be prepared to discuss them at a later date. And with that, it looks like we have two minutes. We're two minutes ahead of time, Madam Chair. Look at that. So we can go to recess until 6:00 PM. So Kyle, would you take us off, please?
All right, we are back. And Mr. Schwartz, I believe we have guests for public comment?
We have one speaker sign up virtual. I'll read the rules for public forum. Speakers should identify themselves. Statements should be brief, to the point, and limited to three minutes or less. Board members should not be expected to respond during the forum to statements made by speakers. When appropriate, CCPS staff may address the speaker's concerns directly. Statements should relate to Charles County Board of Education agenda items or any education-related topic with the following limitations. Questions don't matter depending on potential appeals, or the comments regarding the actions or statements of individual staff, or the private lives of any individual are not appropriate topics. Proper language and decorum are required at all times.
We have one virtual speaker tonight. It's Ms. Small. Ms. Small, if you want to go ahead and turn your camera on and start your comments.
I have my kids all over me, so I'm going to be off of my camera, if that's okay.
That is a okay. Yes, ma'am. That is a-okay, yes ma'am.
Perfect. Thank you, the life of a mom. So my name is Pascal Small. Good evening to our board members and our superintendent. I'm here representing some of our parents, community members, and advocates who care deeply about the academic success and future of every child in our county. Today, I'm asking you to consider the importance of equitable access to extended learning opportunities, specifically for elementary students who are one, two, and even three grade levels behind in reading and math. Right now, our community schools and our Title I schools receive additional academic support made possible by federal funding, and we are super grateful for that and that those schools have access to those resources. Other schools that don't qualify, though, are often led to, left to bridge gaps on their own. Families in these schools, such as myself, are asked to fund rates for support, which isn't sustainable, and often students go without the evidence-based help that can make a real difference in their academic journeys. We are here because we have a solution. And we have spoken about this at other board meetings. We have also spoken about this with Mr. Lowndes and other leaderships at Jesse Starkey. The solution would be that parents and community members are ready to step up and volunteer as tutors. We want the right training and support, and with that, they could be in our classroom or after school, providing a high dosage tutoring that research shows is highly effective in closing academic gaps. This approach has been proven to help students catch up, boost both skills and confidence in the ways they can have a lasting impact on their futures. But we do need the board's help and the district. To make this vision a reality, we do need funding to train volunteers, resources for curriculum materials, or to learn intervention supports, and support for school leadership to coordinate efforts in sustainable, impactful ways. Allocating funds to expand these opportunities to all of our schools would mean that every student who's struggling has a fair shot at success, and this would make it more equitable as well in the other schools that are not receiving this federal funding. Our community is ready. We have volunteers, the commitment and the desire to help our children thrive and provide these extended learning opportunities. What we are asking for is, again, the financial and administrative support to make this happen. So thank you again for considering this request.
Thank you, Ms. Small.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mackey. All right. Next up is reports from board members. So as you all remember, last time, in our October meeting, we tabled this today because it was such a long meeting. So thank you all for holding your comments. And as Madam Chair had asked last time, if you did attend MAE, you can also use this opportunity to report out on, you know, any takeaways that you had from MAE. So I can start on this end with Mr. Verk, and we'll just work our way around.
Um...
Sorry, Mr. Verk.
It's okay.
Not ready?
I'd like to start talking about, I attended the PAC dinner at North Point. I think that was, was that this, last Thursday? And I had the opportunity to sit in on one of the meetings, because they were really nice, and I had nowhere to go. So I sat there, and it was really nice to be able to talk about CTEs and ways we can improve them, ways that we think they're falling short, ways that, and places that we think CTEs are doing very well. And I sat in a Cisco classroom at North Point, and it was very nice talking to all of the community members about, you know, some of which were teachers, some of which were community members in their craft, and we got food from the culinary CTE at North Point, and it was just a wonderful experience, and I'd really like to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verk. Ms. Bella Washington?
Yes, I just want to say that it was a thrill to, to attend the Watermark Early Learning Center. We had a ball there, and the students was excellent. I had one student, she showed me everything in the box. She was so excited, so we played a little bit. So that's part of being on the board, is really, really, to me, is the best, because we get to interact with our pre-K there in Watermark. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Warren? Or are we going this way? I'll go to Mr. Hancock, sorry. Oh, I'll go on what order I'm going in. Apologies.
It's okay. I'll be quick. So I did attend MAE for a very little bit. I had the pleasure of watching Dr. Blanchard give his presentation, which is really cool. It's really impressive to see one of our, our fine people being recognized on a state level. So I'm very proud of him. And then, on Friday, my wife and I actually cooked burgers at the Playta High School homecoming, and that was a lot of fun. And a homecoming game, which didn't turn out too well for them, but that's okay. It's all, the burgers were good, so, thank you.
Mr. Lucas?
Hi, thank you, Ms. Kramer. So I thought the MAE conference was, was very good this year. There was some, I was there along with other board members for, for the entire conference. Ms. Kramer, myself, and Ms. Thomas, Ms. Brenda Thomas, went to a session on the right to read, and so I think that's something that not only us, but, but other boards across the state were going to need to come up with a process for, for books that, that folks may find objectionable in libraries, and let's be clear about that. But it was a very interesting, very interesting discussion, a very informative discussion. Had a roundtable on equity, which was very good, and I thought that Dr. Wright's talk during, you know, her keynote talk was very good. She talked on a lot of things and making evidence-based decisions. And overall, I think it was a very, very good and informative conference. With my other board members, I was at the ribbon cutting for the ELC. I also attended my favorite events to hear the all-county students, and was that the all-county chorus and all-county orchestra, and at St. Charles and at Westlake, and just excellent, excellent performance. And thank you for the guest conductors who were there. And congratulations to all the teams that are, that are still moving forward in the state competition in fall sports. I wish them all success, and I'll be there rooting you on when I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. You know, you'll see me out there, too.
Always, yes.
Ms. Smith?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So one, I'd like to give kudos to the MAE Conference Planning Committee, which is mainly myself and Ms. Misha Thomas. I don't think you all understand the yeoman's work that was required to kind of get the MAE Conference off the ground. When we say MAE, that is the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. Again, when I say that your board is serving in a variety of different places and not just here when you all see us televised, that's what I'm talking about. So we serve in a variety of different capacities. Some of us are on the national level, some of us on the executive board. All of us serve on some committees in some respect. Ms. Misha Thomas and I happened to serve on the Conference Planning Committee this year and made sure that we were able to elevate the promising work that's happening in the county in order to share across the state with our colleagues. So had the pleasure of seeing Dr. Blanchard, who is our Director of Student Services, as well as Ms. Bella Lugo, who is our Behavioral Mental Health Coordinator, talk about the innovative work that we have been doing here for school-based mental health. You all, when I tell you that the room did not move when it was dismissed, that's what I mean. When I talk about every chair was full, that's what I mean. When I talk about a multitude of questions, just really wanting to understand, like, so wait, what is this contract again? How are you all doing it? How are the students getting services in school? Okay, what's the coordination back to the parent? How long are these, oh, these are licensed and credentialed individuals that these students are working with? Yes and yes. So I definitely want to give kudos to Dr. Navarro and her team for putting us in that position to be able to share information across the state, and just well done to Dr. Blanchard and Ms. Lugo. During MAE, I also attended the chronic absenteeism session, which was led by attendance work as well as the Institute of Educational Leadership. They spoke about chronic absenteeism being the leading indicator and cause of educational inequity across the country. So mainly, students who are not coming to school are not able to access the education services or supports that they are required to have to progress in life. They also spoke about the correlation between attendance and grade-level success. Obviously, if you are not in school, you cannot access education. So then you get into those two or three grade levels behind in reading and math. So just wanting to ensure that all of our students are attending school as often as they can, and never falling into that category if at all possible. We also attended a session called Using Blueprint Stories to Ignite Curiosity and Share Impact. So wanting to know more about how can we position ourselves to better tell the story to our communities about not only what is the blueprint, I think Ms. Miller does a wonderful job at that, but specifically, how is it pushing into the different schools? What does it look like in different places? And how are parents and kids realizing the impact of the blueprint and the way in which we're implementing it? I think there are several sister counties who continue to have some challenge with implementing the blueprint, but Charles County has stood tall and pressed forward. We've made it very clear that we are not in the business of trying to solve adult challenges, but we are here for kids. So doing our level best to push forward and make sure kids have what they need. So very proud to stand on the sort of statewide stage and tell the story of Charles County and some of the things that we've done. Rounding it out, went with several of my colleagues to the early learning grant opening. Again, always impressed of how Charles County is investing in early education. That is a sweet spot for me. So looking at our littles, our three- and four-year-olds, and how they're, they're learning through play, you know, coordinating with their friends, learning color through play, building those friendships and relationships, those social-emotional skills. So very excited to see the, the great things that are happening down on that side of the county. Also went to the CTE presentation at Davis Middle School, just ensuring that all middle school parents are aware of the CT options that have opened. The portal is open for those eighth-grade parents and those 10th-grade parents. But just making sure that every student in the building, specifically the eighth graders, understood what opportunities await them in high school and how to access them, but mainly speaking to parents. Lastly, and this was a sort of mom-board member sort of convergence moment for me, attended the open school night at North Point High School and wanted to tell you just a brief story that sort of brought home for me all the things that we do here. Was in my child's AP Physics class, and the teacher asked, how many parents have taken physics when they were in high school? Several hands went up. How many parents took AP Physics in high school? Several hands went down, but some remained up. How many parents took AP Physics in 10th grade in high school? All hands went down. So from a parent's standpoint, my child has access and opportunity that I, that was never afforded to me. And so this is what it's all about. This is why we do what we do, and it really was just a sort of culminating moment for me to see the work that we all do, we do on the board and realizing it in real time as a parent. So want to say thank you to my colleagues, thank you to Dr. Navarro and her staff, very excited about what this county is doing.
Ms. Brenda Thomas?
Um, let's see. I went to the domestic violence ball at JC's. One of the other ones I went to was at the sheriff office, Purple Light, was also about domestic violence, which I was there. Also went to MAE, which I was on the Budget Committee. Excited about the early learning, cutting the ribbon center, that little ones are so cute. I tell you. And we went to the Chamber of Commerce, where supported our young kids there, entrepreneurs there. I think that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Misha Thomas?
Thank you. So as you guys know, HR is my jam, trying to get us staff with the right people in the right places with the right skills. So I went to Crosson High School, as you know, CTE, and how we get experts in order to be able to have them in the classroom, as well as making sure that they can get the students to pass the test. Crosson High School in Prince George's County is a new hub in PG County, and they have a Cisco cybersecurity program. And I went over to just see what they're doing, because they said they have 100% pass rate of their students, so I wanted to find out what they're doing and what we can borrow. And we had some conversations. They have some of the same struggles we've had with getting experts in the classroom. So that leads me to the MAE conference that I went to. And the MAE conference, Dr. Wright was there, superintendent, state superintendent of schools, and I took my opportunity to ask the question about us having an adjunct model for how we get experts in the classroom. She, you know, thought it was a great idea and said she was going to look into it because she's done it in other places. So I think it's an opportunity for us as, you know, just triangulating that we know with the blueprint, we're gonna need more experts that are teaching some of these CTE programs, asking the state superintendent of schools if she agreed in open forum in public, and then, you know, looking to see what people are doing around the county. And then, and then also just looking at what we're doing. I'm also on the, the Chamber of Commerce, Charles County Chamber of Commerce Committee, and in that committee for, for the hiring and recruiting and that kind of thing and working collaboratively with the community. They are working to try to get some apprentice from our schools and trying to get businesses. So that's also an area that they're looking at how to start that program. So I attend those on a monthly basis to try to make sure that they're looking at what our, where our students can be placed in businesses around the county, and also helping them move forward to look at other businesses that may not be in the county, if it's a virtual internship, or what to do to prepare our students. So I've attended those sessions as well. And then I went to the CTE program. I was with Mr. Verk over at the program, and again, we had some delicious food from North Point, but the Dr. Wright's person who's in charge of CTE programs across the state was there. I took it and had another opportunity to say, Dr. Wright said that she wants to do this adjunct model, and he said, she agreed? I said, yes, she did. I said, here's my card. Charles County wants to be the pilot. Let's figure out how to get, and this is really for how we are able to get experts from the community that have the skill and expertise to come into our schools and maybe relax some of the rules around what it means to be a certified teacher. Not that they won't teach our students, but it is quite a task to ask a professional to leave their expert job, IT or others, come to the school system, take all the classes to be a certified teacher, and also teach the classes that they need. It's, it's, it's very cumbersome and it's burdensome, and we just want to look at different ways that we can attract those industry experts to our schools to teach our students, but try to lessen the burden on them, because if we can't lessen the burden, they may be less inclined to come to the school. And we know with the blueprint, we're gonna need those individuals from the industry to come into the schools to help support us. So that's what I've been working on, as well as, at MAE, I attended the, or facilitated the AI session, as Ms. Smith spoke about, we were on the committee. So I, one of the sessions I facilitated was AI, very interesting. Parents, get into it. AI is coming for your students, and no, and no, it is not gonna take over everything. But there are absolutely some things that are, can be beneficial to your students, helping them do thought processing in order to be better writers. So I know Ms. Thompson did a session, last week, was it last week? Last week, Ms. Thompson did a good session about AI that I attended as well. So parents really, you know, take the opportunity to try to dig into some of the things. Some people think ChatGPT is a dirty word and students should not use it. There's responsible ways that students can use ChatGPT in order to help them learn, especially if you have a struggling writer who will sit and say, I don't know what to write. ChatGPT is a great place to just get them started, not to plagiarize, but to get them started. So, you know, Ms. Thompson's done a session, it was taped, right? So parents can go back and look at it. And then I also facilitated a session on effective resource allocation strategies for the blueprint. I thought very fondly of Ms. Acton to talk about how we will incorporate the blueprint in our new systems, and so that is what I've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Now, Ms. Warren.
Yes, good evening. So I did attend St. Charles Open House earlier this month, and I had the privilege of meeting Mr. Blue. He taught the Financial Literacy/Business Entrepreneur class, and he was phenomenal. And I was the only student in the class, so I was happy. I think it was during like a break or changing classes, so he really laid out everything that they took, that they teach, that he teaches in the class, and I thought it was very, very, just, just phenomenal, really. And he even shared how he had former students come back, and they said, listen, I followed everything you said, I brought my first town home, so it really impacted the students. It was just a pleasure to meet him, meet a lot of the staff there, and talk to Ms. Little. So it was, it was a good time. I also attended MAE, and I attended the workshop on improving student outcomes for college and career readiness through the, through the blueprint, of course, for Maryland. And my, one of my biggest takeaways, they talked about, consider keeping in mind all grades systematically, not just high school, because I think when we think of CTE pathways, we automatically think high school, because that's where it's, that's where they begin the pathway. But they talked about introducing elementary school kids to real-life experiences, middle school kids, so I really enjoyed that. And that's about it. Thank you.
Ms. Warren. Madam Chair?
All right. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I also attended MAE. Kudos to our colleagues, Ms. Misha Thomas and Ms., excuse me, Mr. Jamila Smith, who served as facilitators, as I mentioned, it's a yeoman's job to not only help to plan Um as I mentioned, it's a Yoda's job to not only help to plan the entire conference, but then to facilitate. They did a fantastic job. Um I attended the session with Ms. Um Jamila Smith on moving the mark on attendance. It was fantastic. And they just candidly discussed chronic absenteeism. I have lots of notes that I'd like to share with Dr. Navarro. Um they defined chronic absenteeism and many of us were surprised candidly by the definitions. And they talked about the three tier approach to combat it. And um of course, having more parental and community involvement as states that can help to lessen the issues. So it was it was very well done. I learned a lot. Um I also attended a session on effective resource allocation strategies presented by Anarundel County Schools. I believe Ms. Nicole Kramer attended that with me as well and um was very, very informative. Um kudos to Dr. Blanchard and um his presentation on how CCPS is innovating school-based mental health services. It was fantastic. Um and people were candidly just blown away by some of the things that we're doing. And I very much appreciate that CCPS is stepping into the limelight, that we're not being shy about all the amazing work that we're doing, that we're sharing it. That people are able able to learn from us as much as we've learned from others. So kudos to them. I also attended the student panel with um the student board members, which was very informative. And they had quite a lot of discussion, among other things, about cell phones. So we'll put a pin in that. We'll circle back to that. Um also attended the um the board chair and superintendent's networking lunch. It was fantastic to be able to speak with other superintendents and other board chairs from around the state. And share best practices, to learn from each other, to understand some of the similar things that we deal with and how um the differences um impact us. And how we're all trying to candidly stay in this fight and and to do our very best every day. Um also had the opportunity to hear from our Dr. Wright, our state superintendent. It was fantastic. Um Mr. Lucas said I'll mention it, but um kudos to him and congratulations. He is now the MAVE secretary. Um so congratulations, Mr. Lucas. Um I was appointed on the MAVE Board of Directors and we have an upcoming retreat. So very interested to see um what all that's going to entail. Um very excited to be working uh on the state level um and having an impact there. As Ms. Jamila Smith has mentioned, we are well beyond just coming to these two meetings every month that you all see televised. We are doing much more than that. Many of my colleagues are being humbled in the amount of work that they do and the amount of uh time and resources that we put into it. Because we take this work very, very seriously. Um to that end, I was recently appointed, literally sent an email and received a response that I was now appointed to the NSBA Nominating Committee. So I have the pleasure of um helping to uh reappoint this board D S Smith, who has been reelected to her second three-year term. Um she's from Vermont. So she is now um reappointed to serve as the Director for the Eastern Region on the National School Boards Association. That's that was incredible. Uh we haven't reported that in a while. So just a quick shout out to Dr. Bernard Jackson, who was um appointed or nominated, rather, for the um N W A C D Trailblazers Luncheon. Um on behalf of the Purple Boots Program and everything that they do for CCPS. Very much appreciated. Um Dr. Navarro and I have been voluntold to serve on a statewide leadership program, which would involve all um chairs and superintendents. And we had our first the first meeting last week virtually. It's a year-long program and it's an opportunity to connect and share best practices with um state superintendent, oh sorry, excuse me, with local superintendents. And with um board chairs. And eventually they will be incorporating the vice chairs as well. So I'm very excited about that. I think there's endless um opportunities there and very much appreciate being able to hear what our other LEAs are doing. So that was exciting. Um we also, um Ms. Kramer and I met with the EACC Board of Directors and heard some of their concerns, which we have shared with Dr. Navarro. So we thank them for always inviting us. Um I attended the early learning, um Waldorf Early Learning Center opening. Love the littles. Can't say enough about how they just brighten my day. Also attended the Savor the Flavor and the um Chamber of Commerce Education Committee meeting. And as Ms. Um Thomas, Samisha Thomas shared, the apprenticeship opportunities are fantastic. So I'm very much learned a lot from that. And um kudos to Ms. Autumn Hoffman. Uh we met a few days ago to discuss a blueprint, um pillar four, and particularly ESOL Subcommittee um uh contingent. And that was very, very eye-opening. I learned a lot about Title III grant funding and what it's used for and the rock star results um that they have received in community engagement. So we all agree, kudos to Ms. Jenny Herrera, who's doing a fantastic job. Um is allowing family and um community outreach coordinatorally for Titleists. So that was fantastic. And we asked unashamedly, whatever their secret is to their heavy parental involvement, we want to replicate that because they've had incredible success and the turnout is speaking for itself. So finally, I'm excited for the fall sports and theater season. Um you know, in particular, in my other life, in my head, I was a thespian, so there you go. And final reminder, uh we have our virtual town hall actually next week on November the fourth. Um it is on a Monday, I believe, starting at seven PM.
Yes.
And we, yes, thank you. We will be discussing uh school climate. Please join us. You're welcome to discuss any topic. Uh the board, as you know, has these town halls um quarterly just to have the the public be able to not only speak to us, but to have us uh be able to share information with the public. So I'm hoping to see as many of you as possible join us. Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair. I know that was long. I tried to wrap it off as quickly as possible, but we didn't um report out. So we had quite a bit to share. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um yeah, to say that uh we're a busy board would be an understatement. I feel like um there's just so, you know, this this board comment um se- section is always so indicative of all the work that we're doing behind the scenes, so to speak. Um so I will try to be as quickly, um as quick as possible, as brief as possible. Um so I attended MAVE with many of my colleagues. Um I always enjoy going to professional development with my colleagues. Um we really always, you know, I think have quite a few takeaways. Um and I like how we divide and conquer some of the sessions. So I went to some of the same sessions as my colleagues, but obviously a couple of different ones, so I'll highlight those. Um I I went to, I attended an Equity Roundtable on the blueprint and we, the topic of discussion was how to increase access to board meetings. Um just talking about some of the barriers in different communities, like transportation, um language, you know, things like that. And um there was a lot of great ideas shared and I really took um took a lot away from that and some ways that we can um continue to increase access um to the board. Not only just the board meetings, but just activities in general and information in general for the public um to know about what the board is doing, what the school system is doing. Um to help spread awareness and for information um for our parents and community. Um I also attended the um Anarundel County Blueprint Funding Allocation Presentation. And it just bears repeating that there's so much work that Ms. Acton and her team do. Um and that was really eye-opening for me. Um you know, as the opposite of whatever an accountant is. Um it it just, you know, that it was just so, so mind-blowing, you know. Um sorry, I I know she's a CFO. Didn't mean to diminish your role, um Ms. Acton. But um just all of the the data and the numbers and how they really just broke it down to a level that I could understand, right? About how much work goes into um the reallocation required under blueprint and the reporting requirements and all of those things. And they broke down some of the challenges and all of that. So it really was helpful to understand just everything that is going on again behind the scenes um in in terms of your role and that. So um thank you again for all of your hard work. Um the student panel, as some of my colleagues said, was really eye-opening. I always, that's one of my favorite um parts of MAVE. Um that, you know, for the last two years that we've attended was hearing from the students. Um I really enjoy that. I like to hear their perspective. Um I like to hear what they think is important because a lot of times, as adults, we focus on what we think is important. And sometimes we're aligned and sometimes we're not. Um and so I just really think that that helps put things into perspective. Um I also appreciated Dr. Wright coming um coming down to speak to us. Um I really appreciate her leadership. Um I I think her passion and her commitment to Maryland um and to moving us forward is really evident. Um so definitely looking forward to um more uh from her and um just following her lead on that. Um again, kudos to Dr. Blanchard and Ms. Lugo, who presented at MAVE. And I just want to remind everyone, Charles County is a leader in the state in many ways. Um and this was just one way to kind of um illustrate that and to highlight that. Uh because as Ms. Smith said, I mean, everyone was just, you know, eyes big, focused on everything that Dr. Blanchard and Ms. Lugo were saying. Um and had tons of questions after the session on how they could try to implement some of the things we're doing here in terms of mental health. Um resources uh in their LEAs. And so just kudos to them um for all the work that is being done and for the presentation. It was very well done. Um so thank you uh for that. I also want to um just remind everyone, as Mr. Lucas did, we are still in fall uh sports season. So you may have seen me at a football game or two or three. Um some games are still going on. I believe we have a few more, like one more week maybe. Um so get out and, you know, support those students if you can. Um athletics is huge. Um it's a huge part of our school system. We have some very talented kids out there that are on the fields, um whether it's soccer, football, um what else is going on, lacrosse, I don't know.
Volleyball.
Yeah, the dancers that come out, absolutely, during the halftime, um the cheerleaders. Yes, absolutely. Come and support them all. Um I also attended the Project Lead the Way. Um uh I guess is it considered a graduation? Mr. Lucas, you were there as well um at Westlake, but it included all of the schools, so all of the Project Lead the Way students from all schools. Um and it was just amazing. They all came up and as they were coming up, the um instructors were reading off what their plans were for the future. And so we have quite a few um neurologists and marine biologists and all kinds of, you know, child psychologists. And lots of, the future of medicine is certainly bright um with the the contributions from Charles County Public Schools. So that was, that was incredible. Um I also attended a CTE information night at Madawoman uh Middle School. And I just want to thank Mr. Riesinger and I think Ms. Mizowitz was the other person that was um there presenting with him. Um my child is only in seventh grade and I have two older kids that did go through CTE programs, but things have changed so much. Um and so since, you know, I'm kind of doing this over again. You know, I wanted to go out for, as a parent, you know, to learn um about the process and for my son to kind of get exposed early. Um so really appreciate those opportunities because I remember when my older kids did it and it was literally like maybe too many sessions in eighth grade. Um and that was it, you know. And it was like, here, go submit your applications, you know. So I really appreciate the opportunities with the CTE camps in the summer and all of the information sessions that were presented all around the county to give everyone an opportunity to go out um and learn about those opportunities. So definitely enjoyed that. Um and lastly, I will say, um I attended the J P Ryan Hansen E L C Waldorf Combo Trunk or Treat. And when I say there was a million kids there, I'm totally not exaggerating. Um it was crazy, but it, the kids looked like they were having a blast. So there were so many trunks and everybody put a lot of effort into decorating. The kids looked happy and so that warmed my heart. So um that's a little bit about what I've been doing. So thank you all, colleagues. I think I've gotten to everyone. Right? Okay, perfect. All right, now we're going to move on to new business. And I think we're just like four minutes behind, so we're doing pretty good on time, Madam Chair. We're doing pretty good. Um so we'll start with you, Dr. Navarro, with the calendar update. I believe you have something for us.
Thank you. Um so as the board may recall, you approved the school calendar and I am here to request um a slight change to this year's calendar. Um so this year, um schools' last day for students and um ten and ten and a half month employees is December 20th, which is on a Friday. Um and then uh offices are open on the, on Monday, the 23rd. Um everything is closed on the 24th and the 25th. And then I believe we're back to operating on the 26th and the 27th as 12-month employees. My ask of the board is if they would consider um as we have in the past, uh closing for 12-month employees on Monday, the 23rd. That would allow our 12-month employees who are uh most of our ASME employees, um uh administrators, um central office folks that you see here. The opportunity to have an extended um winter break.
Okay, any, Mr. Hancock?
I make a motion that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation in regards to the calendar.
Second by Ms. Brenda Thomas. Any discussion or questions? You got a question, Ms. Thomas? So Dr. Navarro? Okay.
So Dr. Navarro, is this something that that you're just doing because of where the days fall, just to give them that day kind of?
Yes, and and so it's just an opportunity for us. We have very, history has taught me now, this is my fourth year, um that we have, I mean, if the phone rings. We just have very few um of that in our, and there's very few times when 12-month employees, it coincides this nicely.
Thank you. I just wanted to, for the sake of the public, to to know that, you know, this is not something that we are normally just flip-flopping calendars. But it's just due to the the fact that whether holiday falls and it really is a day that um we can turn the lights off and save some electricity and also let employees have some time. So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, a pass unanimously. Thank you. And then any other new business? Ms. Butler Washington?
Briefly, I did speak to uh board members about the uh Pride um resolution. So I wanted to give some back, uh some back history on this. Um and I want to read it because I want to make sure I'm focused when I say this, because I don't want to say the wrong thing, so I wrote it down. Uh the Board of Education mission is typically centered around providing high es- uh high-quality education for all students within its jurisdiction. Including they are prepared for successful in college careers and as a responsible citizen. At the public comic earlier this month, Dr. Green, a highly respected educator, inspired me to reflect deeply on my role. Additionally, many pastors have reached out to me with a concern about the Pride uh resolution. Please believe me, when I say this, I am confident that every student is respected in our school and I accept everyone where they are. However, I want our focus to be on ensuring that our students reach grade level in both math and reading. Surveying the community on the Pride resolution is important because it ensures that all the decision-making process is inclusive, transparent, and respectful of diversity perspective. And I move to seek community input on Pride resolution before it goes into effect in June, 2025.
Is that all, Ms. Butler Washington?
Yes.
Any questions? Is there a second?
I would like to second that motion.
Okay, so it's been moved. Um a second is, so just to clarify, Ms. Butler Washington, you're asking for the board to approve a survey on the Pride resolution that was passed. Uh what was that, in September? Anyone remember? September, 2024? Dr. Navarro? When did we pass?
I think it was in September.
Okay, just want to clarify, but the resolution that was passed, that we already passed, that the board passed, um and you want uh staff or Dr. Navarro to direct staff to um send out a survey to the community about, asking what, though?
Asking what are their thoughts on having Pride um in the school, that we decided to have Pride in the school. Just asking a simple question. Um would you uh want Pride introduced into the school?
Okay, and so it'd be uh like a single yes or no question?
Yes or no, and then they can give.
Or do you agree with this resolution or? Okay, and then suppose, what do we do with those results?
And we come back and discuss it as a board.
Discuss?
What 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 the community have stated, what they said.
Mm-hmm.
And then we um can discuss um what the result is, because we don't know where the results are.
Mm-hmm.
The results could be just, they agree with the resolution. But if they don't um agree with the resolution, um we should, as a board, discuss uh those um comments or or what the um the wheel of the community is.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so you don't have any direct action in mind? Just send out the survey?
And let, and when the community, and when the, when the survey questions come back, then we can discuss at hand what, you know, what the community wanted.
Okay, anybody else have?
Vice Chair, I have, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes.
This is a clarifying question. So assuming, you know, the board votes to send the survey and the community, you know, says in general that they're not in favor. The board has already passed this resolution, so what action then um would we take? I understand Ms. Butler Washington is saying to discuss it. Would we just discuss it among ourselves and then just acknowledge, I think, we're in support? Or is there something further you were looking for us to do if the community does not support it, Ms. Butler Washington?
Uh yes, because if we, if the community does not support the resolution, um and they are a part of our community and we are part of their community and the students. There is a process in place that we can rescind the resolution.
That's the action that you're asking the board to take, is that, one, we send out a survey? And two, if the majority of the respondents are not in favor of the resolution that we already passed, then you would like the board to rescind? So then, in this case, we're agreeing to both things. I just want to be clear to everyone.
we're agreeing to both things. I just want to be clear to everyone, right? That's what you're asking?
Yes, that's the X.
Okay. Madam Chair, did you have any other questions or comments?
Um, yes, I appreciate, you know, where Ms. Butler-Washington is coming from. I understand that this is definitely a hot button issue for many people, you know, we heard the feedback. But for me, I feel like this is an action we should have taken before we passed the resolution, when we first started discussing it. Because I can't, we don't know that we've ever rescinded a resolution. I don't know what that would look like. And I'm just concerned about setting a precedent. So I, I don't, you know, I, I, you know, I appreciate, you know, you said to Ms. Butler-Washington that I can't support this for something that we've already passed. That, that's, you know, obviously it's the will of the board, but that's just my personal opinion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Samisha Thomas?
Thank you. So we know with surveys, there is a, it's kind of a, it's up in the air as to how many survey respondents you get, right? So if we get 10 respondents and nine people say, no, we didn't like it, because we serve such a vast community, is there a number threshold that you have in mind that we would then even consider or discuss? I think that would be one of my concerns because we know sometimes, and I think Ms. Mackey can probably talk to us about the numbers of if we send a survey, do we really get a lot of respondents, a little bit or a lot? Because if we want a sampling of the community, what is considered the sample size that we need in order to be able to think that this, or to consider it reflective of the total community and not just some people? So that would be one of my concerns. The other, the other concern would be, you know, as you stated, Ms. Butler-Washington, we want the students to be improving in reading and math. I think the time it takes for staff to put the survey together for us to come back, I feel like it, it may detract a bit from the other work that we need to do. So that, those are my two concerns at this point.
Ms. Smith?
Uh, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Totally echo the sentiments of what my colleagues have shared. Ms. Butler-Washington, I understand the reason and rationale for why you're bringing this idea of a survey. I would wholeheartedly be against it because I actually wholeheartedly stand for the Pride Resolution. I have not wavered in my support for it. I think we, one of the interesting things about our board policy is that we, the, any resolution, any idea, has to come before us three times before we vote. So the community had ample opportunity to come in, you know, for or against the resolution. I don't understand sort of why it was after the resolution passed that all of a sudden we had several members come out. But for whatever reason, you know, it's absolutely their prerogative to make their voices heard. I stand for it, so it wouldn't be an interest of surveying the community to figure out whether or not they want to rescind or not. And so I'll just say that.
Anyone else? Ms. Butler-Washington?
Yes, I, I just want to say that when we first, I just want to make her remember, the first time we did this, it failed. And the reason that it concerns me is, and I know I talked to you, Madam Chair, about it, and you, and I believe you when you said that it had nothing to do with me leaving. But when I left for the first time ever in my life aboard meeting early, that resolution came up and it passed. So it, it, it does to me feel like I have to defend this because it was not, because it had failed. It was over. The community thought it was over. So they didn't have a reason to come back here to say anything because it had failed. They only came back because it passed, and that's why you saw the crowd last month, I mean, this, earlier this month, about that resolution. So we're gonna make sure that we say everything, that it failed first time, then it passed, and now we have a concern with it. I have a concern with it. So that's why I'm bringing it up and asking for a survey because that, to me, is only fair because it doesn't go into effect until next year in June. And so hearing the community, their points about it, how they feel about it, to me, I don't think it's a, it's a issue just to let, to let the community say what they feel, so we can hear it and see it on record. It's a hot button issue. And I just don't want a hot button issue to say that we passed this and, okay, we don't care about your feelings, and then they came here and asked us, you know, we thought it failed, you passed it, what happened? Though, and then I got all these calls coming in, because there's a lot of churches in District Three. And I know the pastors, because I went to their church to ask for them to vote for me, so I, they, they had my number already. So that's why I'm sitting, asking the question, can we just go back and survey? Because if we hear what they're saying, I know we do not want to go against what the community want. And I know it passed, and I know what you said, Madam Chair, that we should have done this first. I, I definitely get it. But the, the reason I, we, we didn't do it because it failed. It failed. And that was, you know, that, that's the reason, you know, I'm coming back before you all and asking for a survey. That's all.
Well, just two things.
Madam Vice Chair, can I just quickly, um, just add some, to clarify what Ms. Butler-Washington was referencing?
Yes, go ahead, Madam Chair.
Where, because she's right, it was brought up, it was discussed, it definitely was a hot button issue. Many of us, you know, stated our opinions on the record and it did not initially pass, you know, the first time on the board. The reason why it passed the second time, and, you know, I'm not going to speak for Ms. Brenda Thomas, she can certainly speak for herself. Ms. Brenda Thomas, as a person who initially voted against it, brought it back up, and that was the same meeting I learned Ms. Butler-Washington had to leave because she had some other obligations. It was doing congressional caucus. So it wasn't like it was a concerted effort to pass it during a time when, you know, someone was going to be absent. I learned both things at the same meeting. So if Ms. Brenda Thomas would like to speak, she's certainly welcome to. But just to kind of give some backstory as to how it passed the second time, it's because someone, you know, per Robert's Rules, who initially voted against it, brought it back up, we had discussion again, and it passed the second time because, you know, based on, on who was present at that time. So just to give some, some backstory on that.
Yes, and I'll also add, I don't know if Ms. Brenda Thomas does want to, you know, chime in, and I will let her, and I know, I saw some other hands as well, but also when it initially failed, then we, we did receive sort of some backlash from the community about that. You know, there was community members who were upset that we didn't pass it. So we did receive comments, so we didn't just receive comments after we passed it of those who, from the religious community that were not in favor, but we also received a lot of comments of community members that were disappointed that we didn't pass it the first time. So that's number one. Two, when we did pass it, you did have to leave early that day, Ms. Butler-Washington, but we passed with six votes. So whether you were here and voted against it or not, it still would have passed. So just want to be clear on that. So it wasn't like, and like Ms., you know, Chair, Madam Chair said, we didn't know that Ms. Brenda Thomas was going to bring it back up again, but it, it wouldn't have mattered had you, you know, voted against. You would have certainly been able to, obviously, if you were here, but it, it had the six votes anyway, and so it was going to pass anyhow. So just wanted to clarify that. Did anybody, Mr. Verk, you had your hand up?
I'm fine, thank you.
You're good? Okay, Ms. Smith?
Yeah, no, just wanted to double down on the fact that, I mean, nothing nefarious happened during that meeting. It was all based on Robert Rules, proper order, you know, someone who had dug more deeply into sort of their passions and convictions and really thought through some of the decisions that they had made. So nothing, like, in terms of who was here and who wasn't, I don't think there was anything kind of planned or coordinated around that, just to make that clear. Also, another reason I would not be against this is no, none of our other resolutions require a survey. None of the other resolutions that we've proposed have required us to survey community members to gauge whether or not they would be for or against. We, as board members, have been elected to look into the fabric of who we are as a county, the fabric of who we are as a system. We represent all facets of the community and beginning to think through what is in the best interest of students, what is in the best interest of our educators. And I believe we all sort of dug into our own convictions and decided whether or not we wanted to move forward with it or not, and it passed. So I would not be for setting a precedent of creating surveys for essentially every, you all using the term hot button. I don't necessarily see this as a hot button issue, but I can understand why it's being used. But for every sort of controversial or hot button issue, you know, us having to create a survey to ask the community when in fact we've been elected by the community.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Brenda Thomas?
Um, since I'm the one that changed my vote, basically, I listened to my constituents, and they're the ones that convinced me that, you know, this is something that they would go for and would like for to be approved. And I also discussed it with my great grandson who's in elementary school, which is the reason why I voted against it in the first place. And he said, well, Grandma, this is on TV, it's on YouTube. You don't, it's like he's teaching me. So I like, you know, who am I to say that we shouldn't acknowledge it when they already know? And the constituents say, hey, I think you should have approved it. So I, based on my constituents that talk to me, that's why I changed my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Final points? Ms. Samisha Thomas?
So, um, I, I appreciate all of my colleagues' perspective. It's just given me a different, you know, perspective to hear how everybody feels about it. And one of the things I think is important is we, we got equal amounts of comments for and against. So I do think, to Ms. Butler-Washington's point, it is something that's polarizing in some ways for our community, but as it was stated, we, we got as many people that were so disappointed that we didn't pass it as, you know, we got a lot of people that were disappointed when it passed. So I just think that's indicative of the fact that this is an issue that pulls people in different ways, but it doesn't mean that it's, it's not supported. And it also doesn't mean unilaterally everybody's going to agree with it either. But we haven't done this in the past. And I still, for me, I, I, after listening to everybody, I don't think it's something I can support either because I support things that are going to enrich our community. I think this is something that can enrich our community. In addition to that, one of the things that struck me when people came out was against it, that somehow we were going to be having, for lack of a better term, I don't think this is the right term, but drag queens reading, you know, books to students. And, and I just want people to remember that in your school community, as a parent, you have the right to talk to leadership in your elementary school or your middle school or your high school and talk about what you'd like to see. This is a resolution that's at the, the level of the whole county, but it individually will come into your school in different ways and age appropriate. So at the elementary school level, there's, there's no curriculum. We're not, this is not about teaching students. This is about inclusion of everybody. So for those people who are, you know, very upset that they think this might have something to do with curriculum, Dr. Navarro and her staff are not going to touch the curriculum, has nothing to do with that. This is about inclusion, the same way we've done Caribbean American Month and Military Month, Military Child, Military. It's the same as those that it shows up in different ways and the different spaces and places in your community. And should you want it to be lessened in your community, talk to the leadership in your elementary school, and perhaps you can see some changes that support what your, what your specific school community wants. So thank you.
Thomas?
One more, one more.
Yep, Ms. Butler-Washington, last, final point?
I just want to make a correction. I, I didn't accuse anyone of saying that y'all took a vote behind my back. I had already talked to Madam Chair. So we, she already filled me in it and there. So she gave the backstory, but I just want to say that to go in to say that it was already failed. So I do not think you all did anything behind my back. So I just want to make that very, very clear. Okay, so that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler-Washington. Madam Chair, did you have any final comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lu-
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lucas?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Kramer. So, um, you know, we say it's not about curriculum, and I made this point before, but, but it is because, because that's what the, the resolution ultimately points back to. And for me, again, it was about age appropriateness of some of the stuff. I've been on record before and what I support, and people can look that up. But for me, it, it goes back to the age appropriateness and the survey, you know, I, I'll admit that that's a hard thing for me to get around only because if we do that, then we're going to, we're going to start doing that for a lot of things. And quite frankly, at the end of the day, if, if, if the board as a whole wants to do something, it's, it's going to, it's going to get done by, you know, a majority of votes of the board regardless of what a, a survey says. And, and quite frankly, we've seen that in the past and, and in the number of issues. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. And I will just, I just have a couple of comments. Most of my colleagues have said everything already. I will not be able to support the request that you're making, Ms. Butler-Washington, just because of a lot of the reasons that have already been stated. But when something's already passed, I don't think it's a good precedent for us to come back. You know, maybe had this been brought up during discussion, during one of the times that we discussed it before, you know, might have, I might have felt differently. But given it's already passed, I don't, I really don't want to set a precedent. Also, I'm very careful about burdening staff with things. I feel like we have a lot of work to do, and we ask a lot of them already. We ask a lot of the superintendent already. And this is something that we've passed, it's a board decision, and I just like to move forward. I will say that, you know, the board should also think of themselves as a leader, right, in the community too, not just, will we just sway whichever way, you know, particular subsets of the community go? But sometimes we want to make a statement that kind of encompasses our values, right, as a, as a board. And we're elected to make difficult decisions. And for some people, this wasn't difficult. For me, it wasn't, but for some, it may be. But that's what we're elected to do, and so we can't shy away from that. And so we have, you know, that's what we're here to do. So those are my final comments. So if I recall, we have a motion from Ms. Butler-Washington and then a second from Mr. Hancock. So all those in favor of the survey and then potential recension of the Pride Resolution, raise your hand. And opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six.
My hand is raised, Madam Chair. I don't know if you can see.
Okay, so the motion fails, seven to two, five, three, sorry. Thank you for counting for me. Motion failed. All right, next up, we have action items. The first one, Mr. Schwartz, do you need to come up? It's on board compensation, the Board Compensation Committee.
As I reported at a previous board meeting, we had a board compensation committee look at the compensation of the board and any recommendations it would like to make to the General Assembly to change that compensation. That report was submitted to the board's last meeting, I believe. This meeting, we're coming back for an action item on an actual proposal to the General Assembly to increase that compensation. As you may remember, the committee recommended increasing the chairperson's salary from $7,000 to $13,000, increasing the vice chair's salary from $6,000 to $12,000, and increasing the salary for the other board members from $6,000 to $11,500, and increasing the compensation for the, the student member from a $1,000 scholarship to a $5,000 scholarship. None of these increases would affect the sitting board. It would only affect the boards at, after the next election, and it would affect the student member for next school year. On board docs and on the screen is what the proposed bill would look like, and you have that in front of you. And so we're seeking action from the board as to whether it would like to make this proposal to the General Assembly this session.
At the legislative breakfast, right?
And we'll bring it to the legislative breakfast if the board wants to move forward with the correct.
Right, okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
By Ms. Smith, a second. Second by Ms. Samisha, second by Ms. Samisha Thomas. Any discussion? Ms. Butler-Washington?
As I previously stated, I oppose this, not because we don't do hard work, we do do hard work. I just oppose it because it's one pot of money. And, and I, and I just feel that when they get ready to, we, we say how much money we need, they are going to say, they got to bail raise, and they're going to subtract that from the education piece. Because it's not two board, it's not two separate pots of money. So my thing is, we all know what we ran, we knew what the money was, and I definitely understand that people put in the work. I got it. But education for our students and what they need at this time, to me, is the most important. So I do oppose it.
Thank you. Mr. Hancock?
Thank you. And I, I agree with my colleague, Ms. Butler-Washington. We're looking at a, a pretty hefty increase. Right now, if you add everybody together, salary annually with all, all of us is about $55,000 a year. This would jump to $105,500, which is a $50,500 increase. That's a lot of money. That is a lot of money, and it's all taxpayer money from the state and county citizens. And, you know, we had a program earlier today where we talked about iReady and, and how summer programs are being utilized to increase iReady performances. And one of the questions was asked about summer programs, and, you know, summer programs are looking to be, to continue and to be robust because of funding from a few years ago. But one of the concerns is transportation to those summer programs. How far will, will $50,500 go in transportation? I don't know that answer, but I know it will help. I, I think we must put our priorities ahead of this. And look, I respect everyone's opinion, and I know this won't affect anyone on this board, this will be for the next board. And I respect that there is a lot of hard work that goes into this. But we, we have, we're looking at budgets that have not been fully funded as in last year, and we're looking at that being a continuing pattern, I believe. And we just have to be very careful with the money we spend. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Ms. Smith?
Ms. Smith, and then Ms. Warren.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Just wanted to share a bit about sort of why I do stand in support of this recommendation. One, to the recommendation of our commissioners, we did in fact go out with a community work group, just to get community members to recommend to us what they felt was reasonable. And given how they've benchmarked, kind of looking across the state of Maryland, the community thought it was reasonable for this board to receive an increase. One, this board hasn't received an increase in 10 years. No shade on past boards, you know, my colleague included, but this is a very hardworking board. We are everywhere that we can be, from theatrical events, to sporting events, to around the county events, to around the state events, to national events. We are trying our best to benchmark and bring as much information as we can back to the county, but also to be a conduit for information outside of the county, and to share the good works of Charles County. And I would say that that comes without getting gas reimbursement, without getting meal reimbursement, without getting reimbursement for the time spent in other places. So I totally understand and respect that this is not a nominal amount, and I do liken myself as a quasi fiscal conservative, as my colleague, Mr. Hancock, but I also wanna be sure that we're being good stewards of local spending and local money, and I believe this would be a good investment in whatever the next iteration of this board looks like, because we have upped the ante, not just in terms of how we work together, but what the community expects from the work that we do. So I think whoever sits in these seats in the next election, not November 5th, but the next 2026, whoever sits in these seats in the next upcoming presidential, well, not presidential, you know, you all know what I'm saying, whoever sits in these seats next, definitely should be able to meet the bar that we've established and exceeded. And I think the additional compensation needs to speak to that.
Ms. Warren?
Yes, I'm gonna be against this as well. I didn't really sign up for it to be paid a certain fee, it's not a full-time job. I do understand that other counties are making more, and on a normal job, you do get raises and things like that, but for me, it's just not something that I can support. That's all.
Ms. Samisha Thomas?
As you guys know, HR is my jam. So, you know, as I look at this, you know, one of the things is, sometimes we look at the compensation received, and we look at compensation as a total fiscal amount. We also have to look at compensation as what attracts quality people to do the work. The same as we are upping the teacher's salary, because it's gonna lead us to quality people who are committed and dedicated to doing the work, but also need to be paid. The same with the board, right? We want people who are not just gonna take the nominal fee, throw their name in the hat, and run, but people that understand with awesome responsibility is awesome commitment, but that also are gonna be compensated for the work that needs to be done. And we have many people in our community out there that may not consider this because of the amount of work. Most of us here on this board work a full-time job, and full-time meaning some of us are working more than 40 hours a week, and we do this board job. And so I think it's really important to understand that if we wanna continue to let the cream of the crop rise to the top, and that's the quality people that are gonna be good stewards of the education in our county, it's gonna cost a little bit, it's not a lot. I mean, even if you take the money we are making today, I think we make less than $3 an hour, we spread that out of the amount of work we do. Even if you take the new amount and spread it across, we still aren't at $10 an hour. So I just wanna keep that in mind as we consider this increase. And again, it doesn't affect us on the board now, but it does affect boards to come, which means it's gonna affect education to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke?
First of all, I'd like to say, I really appreciate the board members here that are opposing this change. I think it takes a lot of integrity and a lot of selflessness to be able to stay away from the monetary benefits that would potentially come if one were to get reelected. But I also would like to say that I stand in support of my constituents, and that does mean students first and foremost, but it also means student government. And to me, a $1,000 scholarship for a student member of the board, especially when you compare it to other counties, is very minimal, especially with the cost of colleges. Yeah, it's pretty bad, because colleges is very expensive, right? And I'd just like to say, last year, there were two candidates for the SMOB position. This year, there, including me, there were four. And I just think it's very important to get quality students to step up to this position, because I think there are a lot of people that would have been great in this position. And I know that it takes a lot of work, but there needs to be a reason for someone to step up to this position and not work a job in their community and make money that, of course, it does impact them and impact their family, but there needs to be a way to impact one's own student body and still gain something from it. And I think that if we have some incentive for, instead of four people, instead, like, have 10 people run for SMOB, which was, we almost had that number like three years ago, it's really important to attract people to these positions, because if there isn't a lot of competition, then I believe the standard drops, which is why I will be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Madam Chair, did you have any comments?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I wanna thank my colleagues for their comments. I understand this is not, you know, an easy decision, but for me, it's a no-brainer. Absolutely, I support this. I advocate for my future colleagues, just like I advocate for our students. I don't know of a single person on this board that is currently declining the compensation that we are receiving. It's not something that you have to accept, and yet, people do, because candidly, you appreciate that you are working. You know, this is a job, this is not a volunteer position, you know, just like everyone accepts when we travel to Maine or to NSBA, you accept whatever stipend comes with that, and the airfare and hotel, et cetera, because again, this is a job. It's no different than any other job. We are elected officials, and we are professionals. And, you know, this initially started, as I shared before, Ms. Atten and Dr. Navarro had a conversation with me, and were you aware that it had been 10 years since the board had received a raise? I was like, no, I wasn't, obviously. Well, I shouldn't say obviously, I wasn't aware at all, and I was like, wow, 10 years, because I candidly don't know any other profession. We wouldn't allow that for our teachers, for our support staff, anyone else. Instead, if you had received a raise in 10 years, there'd be some eyebrows raised. And by the time this is enacted, we're talking about 13 years. So again, this is not for the sitting board, this is for our future colleagues, whether that's us or anyone else. This is for our SMOB, this is respecting and appreciating the amount of work that goes into what we do. And, you know, I also wanna say that it's not unusual at all for elected officials to receive routine raises. You know, the county officials, the state officials, within the past two years have received raises. Similar situation, there typically is some kind of commitment that's put together, they make a recommendation, and then they vote on their own raises. Or in this case, we have to go before the state, because, you know, we're uniquely funded, or situated, I should say. So this is not something that's out of the ordinary, that's not typically done. I thank the Compensation Committee for their work, I appreciate that they understand that the raises had not occurred in a very long time, that the amount of work that goes into this, and they were very meticulous in their recommendation. Like, they didn't just rubber stamp, you know, what we had suggested, and candidly, they recommended more than we had suggested, in particular for the student member. So I personally support this, I appreciate their work, I appreciate that, you know, we were given a directive by our delegation to put a committee together, and we did that, and this is what the committee recommended, so I thank them for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Lucas?
Hi. Thank you, Ms. Kramer. So I've stated this before, and I can't, I cannot support this the way that is written. You know, I'm here because I'm a public servant, with emphasis on servant, and while I appreciate the comments of my fellow board members, if money is what's motivating you to do this job, then you're not doing it for the right reasons. It has been a long time since board members received an increase, but I think the timing of it as well, the fact that our budget to the commissioners wasn't fully funded, and that, of all the things that we could submit legislatively to help our school system and students, the first piece of legislation would be to increase the board member's compensation, I don't think that sends the proper message to the public. There are hundreds, if not thousands, of people that volunteer their time to the school system and to things in the community. I could've spoken a lot more about events that I attended in the past month, the Esol Community Night, the chess tournament, you know, those people are giving up their weekends. There are people in schools, teachers, who volunteer their time for clubs, because those particular clubs aren't compensated. And while I appreciate the fact that offering a higher salary, you know, might attract somebody, again, if you're not here because you want to do better by kids, then, you know, again, money should not be that motivation. We've got people that volunteer youth sports, that put in more time than any of us, and they're not compensated at all. And I think, just as a general statement as a society, we expect to get compensation for things, instead of that compensation being the quality of student that we graduate from Charles County Public Schools. And this board too, you know, compared to many boards in the state, you know, there's talk about meals and things like that, I mean, we get meals at all our meetings, and there's no issue at all if we have to go to NSBA or MAB, and not every school system in the state can say that, and certainly in the country, not every school system can say that, because they're met with financial limitations. So it's just not something that, right now, I can support, and certainly not in the fell swoop that it's presented. If it had been a gradual increase over years, then I could accept it a little more, but I can't accept it the way it's written. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you to all my colleagues. I do appreciate everybody's comments. I just have a couple of things I have said before, I will support this. Many of the reasons have already been stated, but again, wanna reiterate, as Madam Chair has stated before as well, that, you know, should this be, should this pass and be approved by our state legislators, one, it would not go into effect till, I believe, 2027, am I correct? Mr. Schwartz, 2027?
For the elected members, the student member will go into effect-
Next year, okay, gotcha, so, okay, thank you for that clarification. And secondly, that anyone can decline the increase, you can decline your salary that you receive now, you can donate it, you can do what you will with it. You're entitled to it, but you do not, this doesn't force anyone to accept it, so just wanna make that clear, that, you know, no one has to accept it should it pass. But I think this, for me, comes down to value of the position, that's what it really comes down to. It's not for us, because our term is up in 2026, and it would be presumptive to say that even if all of us ran for reelection, that we would all still be sitting here. So it's not for us, it's for value in the role. And somewhere along the line, you know, school board members were kinda placed at the bottom of the barrel, you know, in terms of public servants, you know? And I don't know how that got to be, but I think that, you know, we, the way that we treat other elected officials, we don't, you know, necessarily snuff at the fact that, you know, our commissioners, or our senators, or our delegates get regular increases, and we're not asking for anything that other LEAs haven't done. That's, again, the importance of the work of the Board Compensation Committee. We didn't come up with these numbers as a board, the Compensation Committee did, which was made up of community members. So they decided, and we just literally, Mr. Schwartz took the Board Committee, or the Compensation Committee's recommendations, and formatted them into a bill. We didn't change anything, any of their recommendations, we went with exactly what they suggested. And I appreciate that work, you know, and I agree with the student board member that, again, it's about value, that, you know, the standard drops if you don't have, you know, a certain number of folks who are willing and interested in serving. And even at $11,000, $12,000, whatever the highest recommendation is for the chair, no one is gonna get rich off of this role. You know, we all still have, most of us, full-time jobs, other jobs that support us and our families, and we're still doing this, because obviously, we're committed to public education. But this just speaks to the value of the position, and again, not receiving an increase, and over, by the time 2027 comes, it'll be about 13 years. And I just think that's unreasonable for the role and for going forward, and someone has to have the courage to do this, because clearly, in the last 10 years, no one did. And so, you know, I'm happy to support this. So those are my comments. We have a motion and a second, so all those in favor of the Board Compensation Committee's recommendation in the bill that Mr. Schwartz drafted to present to the legislative breakfast and to the legislators, raise your hand. Madam Chair? Okay, thank you, thank you. So that's six, all those opposed? Four, so the motion passes. And, all right, next up on action items, don't go anywhere, Mr. Schwartz. The 2024 legislative positions, which we did discuss at the last meeting, and was available on board docs for everyone. Do we have a motion to approve the legislative positions as they were written?
So moved, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Second? Second, Ms. Thomas? As they were written, yep. Any discussion?
Ms. Butler-Washington?
I had submitted last meeting that I wanted to amend that, sorry to read, the board opposed any legislation that would impose unilaterally, hearing-later paternal consent, condition or shift the burden of the proof in special education decision and dispute, including IEP needed and due process hearing. This is the part I changed. But support joint consent in the best interest of the student education needs.
So that's Ms. Butler-Washington's proposed language, that is also on board docs, under proposed language, everyone, if you wanted to look at it. Any, oh, Mr. Lucas, thank you.
We need a second. We need a second for that amendment.
So we already have a first and a motion and a second for the original, so now-
This is a motion to amend-
To amend?
So we need a-
Okay, so we need a second for the amendment, any second for the amendment?
I need a point of clarification.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Are you looking at me? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, no. So I, on board docs, I thought, I thought the part after two was what we amended, but it sounds like what Ms. Butler-Washington said was only the last, literally the last line, where it says, "but support joint consent," so I'm a little confused.
Mr. Schwartz?
The paragraph that's on board docs as the original paragraph in that section is where it says, "special education," the board opposes that first part of it. Ms. Butler-Washington's amendment is added to that paragraph, so the paragraph would then be changed to the lower, the second paragraph there that's longer. So that would be the language that would be in the positions, adding what Ms. Butler-Washington suggested to amend for that section.
So it does start at the word "but," if that helps, Mr. Lucas?
Thank you.
Question, Mr. Hancock, or comment? Mr. Hancock, did you have your hand up? Mr. Hancock?
No, I was gonna second the motion once questions are done.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Ms. Smith?
I'm trying to get clarification on the motion. So whenever a parent engages in the special education process, they are required to sign consent for services and supports that their child would receive. So it's law, federal law, like the parent would have to be a party to the conversations, a party to understanding with services and supports, and they would have to sign, saying they agree with said supports that are being offered to their child, to ensure that they're able to access the curriculum, just like any other kid could or would. So I'm just curious what this additional language adds that's not already a federal requirement.
This is what, the language you propose, oh, sorry, the language you propose, it didn't necessarily want the parent embalming if they agreed or disagreed, correct? You're saying that the way you had it written was, the school would be the final decision-making of if this child gets the program, right?
So the position of the board had always been, this first paragraph that's currently in the position paper from previous years, continuing this year, the bill, the language was based on bills that we had seen in Annapolis previously that tried to shift the burden of proof from the parent to the school system, and that's what the board had opposed, and that's why this language was added to our position paper many years ago, and continued from year to year. The language that's suggested to be added- The language that's suggested to be added, we've never seen a bill that even addresses anything like that, because it's not something that can be done. Federal law already controls that. And so, that's why we've never seen any bill like that, which is why the language never addressed what you're suggesting to add.
Okay. So, what I'm trying to convey here is that if joint consent to the best child's interest, instead of just having it being the school, because it's best to have a parent involved into what, I know you've signed papers, but at the end, it's the school decision. It's not the, it's the school decision.
Parents have certain protections and rights, and they can say, "I don't consent to getting this support for my child." Yes, you have identified these supports. Yes, you say, "My child needs these supports." You have all of these credentialed individuals who are pushing in and trying to help me better understand what my child needs to access education. I get that. I don't consent to it. I don't sign. Your child doesn't get the services.
Is that true? They still don't get the...
Yes.
Correct, yes.
However, I will say, Ms. Smith is correct, that there's already federal law. The ideal state for us to work with families is to have joint consent, parental joint consent. I think that's the epitome of what happens. But, there is a clear process. When that doesn't happen, what the process needs to be followed if the parent disagrees or if there's a major disagreement around the IEP table. But, joint consent, we would agree that joint consent with the parent is the ultimate goal every single time, because it is indeed the best, in the best interests of the student.
Ms. Thomas, and then Mr. Hancock.
Ms. Schwartz, I have a question for you, because my experience with policy goes federal, state, local. We cannot create policy that usurps anything at the federal level, right? So, we can't go broader than federal policy, but when you waterfall policy down, we can be a bit more restrictive, or we can go a little bit, we can offer something more, but we have to comply. And so, as it was written initially, we were complying, because that's why it says unilateral. Unilateral means no one person can do it. It has to be joint, right? That's the whole, so that's why I was a bit confused that even if we have this other verbiage, and it's already there in federal policy, and then the state superintendent has rules and responsibilities and roles, and then we already have them, as we saw in the IEP facilitation meetings and the way our, the due process that happens. And then, to Ms. Smith's point, if the sign, like, I know, I had students on IEPs, I had to sign, and I actually wrote my students' goals, right? I wrote them, and I gave them to the IEP team, and then we went back and forth and back and forth, and then we came up with what we thought was the best, based on what could, you know, occur in the school. So, I do think that process is already happening, and it's already written in law, so I'm not, I'm just confused as to, is this, I guess, just redundant maybe? Or, I'm just trying to figure for more clarity purposes.
Okay. Mr. Hancock?
So, I think, and this is why I support the amendment here, I think it's just so, if a parent were to read our legislative proposal, and that's what this is, it's not anything more or less than a legislative proposal.
Position.
Position, sorry, I apologize. Legislative position. If a parent were to read this as written, "The board opposes any legislation to provide unilateral parental consent," and it continues, but it sounds like, it sounds harsh. It sounds like we're not, you're the parent, we don't care. Where this kind of adds on, it softens it a little bit, where if a parent were to read this, it still says the main thing that we wanted to say, to achieve the goal that we hope that it would achieve in Annapolis, or to block any law that would hurt us, but it also just has that extra part of the sentence that says, "But we support joint consent in the best interest of the student's educational needs." I think it's just a way to promote, you know, working together instead of divisiveness.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Mr. Schwartz, just a point of clarification. Would adding the language have any negative implications in terms of our position? I know sometimes, you know, I say attorneys jokingly, you always say, "Less is more," right? And there's reasons for that. So, would you have, you know, professionally, any concerns about adding this additional language to the position, or would it pin us into a different situation? Can you just kind of elaborate on that a bit?
I don't have concerns that it would hurt us in any way. I don't think it really adds to the protections that we're looking for for special education, because there's never been any efforts in Annapolis that we would ever see or expect to see because of federal law that would address this concern that's being addressed here in this language. So, it's almost unnecessary in a sense, but there's no harm in having that language.
Thank you for that. Madam Chair, did you have any comments or questions?
You just asked a question that I was going to ask, just to clarify, you know, what impact this language would have. So, yeah, my comments have already been made. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
If I could just clarify, I don't know if we ever had a second officially.
I seconded the amendment.
Mr. Hancock said he would second the amendment, yes.
Oh, yeah, I never got to it, though. You're right, but yes, I said...
True. Thank you. My apologies.
I said I would, but I didn't say, but I do second.
Yes. Mr. Lucas?
Yeah, and just one more thing, and, because they literally didn't line up, and that's because in the proposed revised language, it says, "Any legislation that would impose," whereas the first one, it was "Any legislation to provide." I remember having that conversation, and maybe someone can calibrate me as to why we made that change.
Mr. Schwartz?
Uh...
So, that was from Ms. Butler Washington's? Okay. Ms. Butler Washington, you, so I guess that was, that was her suggested language?
Yeah, and I thought we had a discussion about it, so...
My comment is after the "but."
So, you didn't intend to change anything in the top part, you're saying? So, she, okay.
I wanted to add that...
That last piece, okay.
I didn't intend to change that.
So, then that, so then it should...
Madam Chair, may I add something briefly?
Sure.
To Mr. Lucas's point, we did discuss this at the last meeting, and Ms. Butler Washington had some potential language. The only difference is that she just wrote the whole thing out. If that answers your question, Mr. Lucas. We did discuss this before, but now she's formally proposing the language.
Thank you.
But, also, so, Mr. Schwartz, just to clarify, or I guess, Ms. Butler Washington, the first sentence, to Mr. Lucas's point, reads, the board, for Ms. Butler Washington's proposed language, reads, "The board opposes any legislation that would impose unilateral parental consent." But, the original position says, "The board opposes any legislation to provide unilateral parental consent conditions." So, it's switched from "to provide" to "would impose." So, I think what Ms. Butler Washington is saying, she didn't intend...
I just copied, what I got here is, I just added to your last line. I didn't change anything of yours.
That's fine. So, we could certainly go back to the "to provide" language at the top, and that's fine, again, that's the board's will.
So, then that is the amendment, then, the same then as the first paragraph, then, Mr. Lucas? And then, she just wants to add the last phrase, "But supports joint consent, et cetera." Is that clear now to everyone? Okay. All right. So, we have a motion and a second for the amendment. All those in favor of Ms. Butler Washington's amended language to the position, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. All those opposed? Madam Chair, are you raising your hand?
Yes, I can.
Yeah. So, since Sam is not here, we are five to four.
Correct, so the motion does not pass.
So, the amendment failed.
So, we go back to the original motion to oppose, to support, to adopt the positions as proposed.
Got it. So, that motion, the amendment failed, so now we're back to the original, which was originally a motion by Ms. Smith, I believe? Was it?
It was seconded, was motioned by...
By Ms. Morley for...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Ms. Morley first.
And seconded.
And seconded by Ms. Thomas? Ms. Amisha Thomas? Okay, well, I'll call for it again. A motion to approve the legislative positions as originally written. Do I have a motion? Ms. Brenda Thomas?
Seconded by Jamila Smith.
All those in favor of legislative positions as originally presented, raise your hand.
Quick question, if I could? Or is it too late for a question?
I think we passed a quick question.
Just to, for clarification, we're voting on the whole thing now, not just...
Correct. Not just, yes.
Just so the public knows that we're not voting just on that one piece.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Voting on the whole package.
Yep, correct. All those in favor? Three, four, five, six, seven. All those opposed? Seven, are you abstaining, Ms. Warren? Okay, seven, one, and abstention, so that, the original positions pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. All right, Ms. Brenda Thomas, you're up. I think that's it.
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.